Okay.
Ten seconds.
Good evening, everyone. It's now four thirty PM and we are the City of Carmel by the Sea Council, City Council. Today is January fourteenth and I will call this regular meeting to order. Nova, could we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Baron?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Councilmember Dremoff?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here.
Mayor Protem Delves is absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilperson Dremoff, would you like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. We will now go to the extraordinary business section of the agenda. First, do we have a representative from Carmel High School here tonight to give a report out?
I didn't see anyone, Mr. Mayor.
They did an excellent one last week at our council meeting and we thank them for that and hopefully we'll see them next month. Next, we have Chief Tomasi is going to come up and give a commendation to our Carmel Police Officers for a life-saving event.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my honor to stand before you. This is one of the highlights of the job when we get to celebrate some of the high-quality service we provide. And I want to talk about, a lot of times when we talk about first responders, it's about, you know, minutes matter, you know, when we look at our response times. It's important that we respond quickly, but in some cases, it comes down to seconds that matter. And in this incident, the police were actually on scene first of a subject who was choking at a restaurant and they were able to do the Heimlich maneuver and save their life before even the ambulance and fire could get there. So, we nominated them for the Distinguished Service Award through the Monterey County Peace Officers Association and they were actually awarded it, both officers, and I want to read the citation to you about the incident and the award. This is an award that goes to Officer Joe Boucher and Officer Tim Ament. And the citation reads, "On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at approximately eight seventeen PM, Officer Joe Boucher and Officer Tim Ament were assigned to patrol in the city limits of Carmel by the Sea. Officer Ament and Officer Boucher responded to a medical emergency at the Anton and Michelle Restaurant located at Mission Street and Seventh Avenue for a patient who was choking. Officer Boucher and Officer Ament quickly arrived on scene. Both officers assessed the patient and observed the patient was not responsive and not breathing. Officer Boucher and Officer Ament each took turns performing the Heimlich maneuver on the patient. While performing the Heimlich, the obstruction was cleared from the airway and the patient regained breathing and consciousness. The Fire Department and paramedics also arrived on scene and used a suction to remove an additional piece of food in the patient's airway, and the patient made a full recovery. If it had not been for the swift and decisive actions taken by Officer Boucher and Officer Tim Ament for saving the life of a choking victim who was unresponsive and not breathing, the patient most likely would not have survived." The Monterey County Peace Officers Association Board of Directors hereby awards Officer Joe Boucher and Officer Tim Ament the Distinguished Service Award on the ninth day of October two thousand and twenty-four. That award will be worn on their uniforms. It's a red and white service pin, much like the American flag that they'll wear on this side of their lapel, so you'll see it. So, when you see an officer with that pin, it means that at some point in their career, they saved somebody's life. So, thank you for letting me share that. They would be here, but Officer Ament's on vacation. Officer Boucher is on duty right now and he's responding to a call, so he couldn't come in for this.
So, we'd have to call him to get him here?
Yes.
Have to have an emergency.
So, thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you. That's fantastic news. Appreciate that. We will now move on to the volunteer spotlight. We're going to pick a different nonprofit or volunteer each month at our regular meeting and highlight them. Tonight, we invite the Friends of Harrison Memorial Library to come up and give a presentation on their organization and how the community can get involved. Unfortunately, Anne... I'm drawing a blank.
Anne Rurk.
Rurk, Rurk, who I found, I'm going to tell you in a second how I found her, but she was supposed to be here, but she had a situation that came up and she could not make it tonight, so I'm going to pretend that I'm Anne. Ready? All right, so, if you could put the last slide back up. So, I've seen the Friends of Harrison Memorial Library at the Farmer's Market many times, as I'm sure you have, and I've had a brief chat with them. One day, I was down at the South Lot at Sunset Center and I happened to see the door was open there and I walked in and I was just amazed at all the books that are in there. I've never been there before. And it also turns out that they were having a group meeting of all of their leaders and I said, "I need to know more about this and I'm going to feature you at the council meeting." Next slide. So, they actually started in nineteen seventy-three and they started having annual book sales all over town and in Carmel Valley over the years. At their fiftieth and last big sale, which was in July two thousand and twenty-three, they decided that they were not going to have any more big sales, but at that point, they were the only used bookstore in Carmel and I believe they still are, so that's a pretty nice thing. Next. So, you can donate books, books on tape, CD, movies, DVDs, music CDs, and they're open for donations at Sunset Center's South Lot on Tuesdays from ten to one. And if you bring books, please pack them in disposable boxes and I think they only want you to bring at most ten containers. Next. They're also open for purchases Thursday, three to five, and Saturdays, eleven to one at Sunset Center's South Lot at their facility there. And they're also open for purchases at Farmer's Market every Thursday. That's not correct. Sorry, I messed up that slide. They're open Thursday, three to five, and Saturday's eleven to one at Sunset Center. And they're also open at the Farmer's Market from ten to two, all right? The amazing thing is they've donated since nineteen seventy-three over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars selling books, and I think that's pretty amazing and a tribute to their hard work. If we could take the next slide. So, this is a group I ran into that day and I'd like to give them a hand. If you want to volunteer, Anne Rurka, is it AnneRN68@sbccglobal.net. They also have a website on the city website, so you can check them out there, but I'd like to give them a hand because they work hard and they're a dedicated group. I'd really appreciate what they do.
(applause).
So, next up, we have a presentation. It's titled here, "The Role of the City Council and City Administrator." And what I'm trying to do is, I've noticed when I go out and talk to people all the time, I've noticed that very few people really understand how city government works and some people are frustrated by it. And I decided I'm just going to continue to give a little bit at a time my feelings on it because I've been mayor now for about five weeks and I'm learning things all the time. I learned some things today and I'm surrounded by two people that are going to continue to teach me, but I'd just like to share you some ideas. I'm just going to go through these slides as quickly as I can. Our city was founded in nineteen sixteen by some pretty interesting people and as the city was growing, they started looking at things and said, "You know, we need to get some control." They were at that point, part of the county. And they were foresight enough to decide that they wanted to set up this town and they got a majority to vote for it and they became a general law municipality. And that general law thing's going to come up as we start talking about some other options. But they wanted to protect their unique way of life and they also just wanted to serve local needs and become more efficient at it. So, for a hundred and eight years, being a municipality has served us well and we continue the legacy of preserving our community character while running a city, which I'm finding out every day is a lot of work. For those of you who haven't been behind the scenes, I really appreciate a lot more about what goes on next. So, when I decided I was running for office, I heard a lot of people saying, "You're going to be frustrated, they move too slow, there's too much red tape, it's impossible to get things done." And what I found is actually very different. The municipal government actually sets us up for success by having a really defined process, tools for collaboration, and tools also for public accountability. And so, we really have a wonderful structure to develop sustainable solutions. On the surface, it resembles a corporation. How many of you have had companies that you've set up? A few of you? I've done a number. So, you know that your companies have board of directors and that's what we are up here. We're the board of directors for the city. The city administrators are CEO, so everybody reports to him. The Assistant City Administrator, the way I look at it, is Brandon Swanson over here and I see him as the COO, Chief Operating Officer. Then they have department heads underneath of them and that's the same as a department in a corporation. And then we have a city attorney, who's our legal counsel. And I'm going to go through some other areas underneath that in a second. So, back, back. City administrator is in charge of all department activities, so all the department heads report to, in this case, Administrator Rarig. And the city administrator and city attorney work at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council. So, we basically hire them to run the city. Go ahead. The key difference that I see between a regular corporation is we're focused on public good, not profits. It's a little bit of adjustment and that public good is a lot, there's a lot that's embedded in that. So, our success is measured by preserving what makes Carmel special and that's not necessarily the case in all cities, but certainly in this city it is. And in a simple, high-level view, we're trying to ensure it's a great place to live, work, and visit, the visit being, once again, really important for our city. Go ahead. So, the other difference is that city government serves diverse stakeholders in residents, businesses, employees, bondholders, community organizations, and visitors, and that's a lot to deal with. Shareholders are one thing, but that's a complex group of shareholders. Decisions are transparent and accountable because through public debate and open records laws, and again, we're going to talk more about the Brown Act in a future session. Go ahead. So, one of the really great things that I've discovered since I've been here is, I knew these existed, but I didn't really understand how powerful it was to have the commissions. Each of them have five people and we're in the process of recruiting one for the Planning Commission and the Forest and Beach Commission right now. And by the way, we've got good response. At first, we didn't, but now we've got, what, twelve, I think? I think we've had twelve, so we've got a few more to interview and we'll be making a decision. But those people work hard and they're smart and they're local people, so you're getting expert decisions on many issues for free. It's not often you have a company and you have twenty people working for you for free. Volunteers, they provide professional local expertise. Their work shapes the city's future through informed recommendations and they're appointed by the mayor and Mayor Protem and voted on by the city council. Go ahead. So, the other amazing thing that I never had in my company was you have volunteer groups that bring passion and expertise. You have philanthropy funding initiatives that you otherwise couldn't do and together that empowers the city to achieve ambitious goals while maintaining fiscal responsibility and we're working on some of those right now. Go ahead. So, we're here tonight collaborating. The idea is that we get all of you to help us make decisions through collective wisdom. Our processes are intended to be deliberative and that way, we can have thoughtful and lasting decisions. Public meetings provide genuine dialogue to shape policies and build consensus. Go ahead. So, the current leadership, and that's us, the group sitting up here, is focused on moving initiatives forward, maintaining thoroughness and transparency, and evaluating options. And one of the things I've noticed is, is city government is really effective, but it does take a lot of focus, it takes a lot of leadership, it takes a lot of management, and it's unrelenting, I have to say, sitting here. It's unrelenting. You might not appreciate it sitting out there, but I've got a fresh look at it and it never stops. It's a process that continues twenty-four seven. It takes a lot of positive engagement, the city staff and community support, to fuel that progress. I sit up here and I hope all my federal council people and chip and Assistant Administrator Swanson are very optimistic about that we're going to advance critical projects and processes this year. So, in summary, I think the city government really gives you the best of both world. We have tools that, properly used, allow us to make progress. They don't hold us back. So, all the naysayers that talked to me before I ran for office, I could just tell them, "Yeah, I get it, but we have powerful tools that we're going to use effectively." They connect us to the community and to your fairness and by blending private sector efficiency with public sector values, Carmel's government can preserve its legacy and build a thriving and sustainable future. And I think you saw, just in summary, with the budget review that we had the other day, I think we saw some of those ideas coming out and I personally am really excited about how we, as a council, can work very collaboratively with our city leadership to make a big difference this year. All right, thank you. We will now open to general public comments. This is your opportunity to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hand in the chambers and on Zoom if you'd like to speak so we can get an idea of the total number of people who would like to make a comment at this time. All right. All right. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. While stating your name is not required, it helps us identify speakers in the meeting minutes. Please form a line at the podium if you could, although we don't have that many, so you could probably get up one at a time tonight. Under the Brown Act, public comments on non-agenda items must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. Comments on agenda items will be heard after each item is introduced and must pertain to that specific item. Speakers attending the meeting remotely who failed to comply with the Brown Act will be muted. So, go ahead with your public comment.
Can you, I'm David.
She's going to show a PowerPoint for us.
Forward. Thank you. David Dilworth here, representing Hope, Helping Our Peninsula's Environment. We're a nonprofit, been around since nineteen ninety-eight, and welcome. Congratulations on the new council members and I wanted to, actually, I'm not a shill for Dale. This is great, talking about the process that we're going to be going through, through all the time you're here. I wanted to ask you, I do this to a lot of city councils and a lot of agencies, to try to get them to understand who makes the decisions. Sometimes, staff as wonderful as they are here in Carmel, sometimes forget, and you are the decision-makers. There are two kinds of decisions that the city makes. One is called administrative. It's kind of like when you go to a theater and you pay your seven dollars or whatever it costs and the guy says, "Okay, you made the seven dollars." Takes no judgment. The kind of decisions you make and that staff is not supposed to make are those called discretionary or judgment calls. It's very important that you realize, this is very important, my father taught me this, there's an important word and it's spelled NO. Every item on your agenda is there because you have the ability to say yes or no. Do not be a rubber stamp. You're supposed to be here to ask questions and find out what the best decisions are for our town, our village. As Dale was trying to point out, there's two major laws that Hope tries to teach people about. One of them is open meetings and the other one is public records. It's remarkable how little training goes on for elected officials and for administrative staff. League of California Cities has a wonderful setup for this. They will be happy to provide training for Brown Act and Public Records Act. There are also wonderful nonprofits, ours for one, but also California First Amendment Coalition is excellent at giving training on public records and open meetings. Civil bribery. I spoke with a few of you about civil bribery law. Campaign finance reform is the old version, civil bribery prohibition is the new version. Nineteen ninety-three, Carmel almost beat the whole rest of the county in creating a campaign finance reform, including civil bribery prohibition. We had six meetings, eleven drafts, and we came up with something appropriate for Carmel, but for reasons I won't go into, it got dropped. In two thousand and six, Hope, along with the League of Women Voters and the City of Pacific Grove, created the first, Monterey County's first campaign finance law. We'll talk more about that in the future, but I'm pleased to welcome you all to the cheery decision-making you will be...
Thank you so much. Next.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
New council members. My name is Parker Logan. I've always used to believe there was a perceived parking problem in Carmel, but now we've created one. And the previous administration, I think egregiously and steadfastly towed the Sacramento line to, with this day lighting law. And I was here for the meeting and Tomasi put on the best presentation I've seen to this day, but it was unnecessary. There was other things to investigate, there was other ways around this. We could have, for instance, lowered the downtown speed limit to fifteen miles an hour. That would kind of ease up the safety concerns, or we could look at our own data. How many pedestrians did we run over since you've been in Carmel by the Sea? Do you know the number? Do you know the number? Not very many. We shouldn't, I mean, now it's really difficult to find parking in town. We might have only lost a juggling number of forty-some-odd, two-hour parking spots, but how many thirty-minute spots did we lose that are really important for locals who drive up or come in for a quick errand? I've never had a problem driving up to come up to my place of business to collect a delivery or go to work or stop in to check on staff. Now, it's just a hodgepodge. And it makes me wonder why? Why are we towing this line? Is there something down the tubes? Are we forcing a parking problem to be a bigger problem so we can build a bigger nuisance in town, like maybe a big parking structure that's been wanted to be done that everyone's probably against? I think we should revisit what was a mistake to really quickly have this meeting, which was great again, but then boom, all of a sudden, the curbs are painted and we got red zones everywhere and loading zones everywhere and there's no thirty-minute zones anymore and parking is now an issue. And there's another way to reopen this and look at what we can do to keep Carmel safe, to keep Carmel unique, to keep Carmel not Sacramento, and to keep spaces open for, you know, people that have, you know, difficulty, you know, walking to the drugstore, you know? So many corner spots are gone now and it's caused a real headache, which I didn't think we ever had before, but now we do. So, can we open that back up? I know that Farlito and Richards voted yes on that, but that was their last hurrah and I don't think it's helping the city at all. So, please, new council, old council, new mayor, CEO, let's look at this another way, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Parker. And if you have any ideas, I suggest you put them in writing. You obviously are out in the world and see a lot of things, so we'd love to hear your ideas. Love to hear your ideas.
Good evening. I'm Laura Bowling. I, in the spirit of nonprofits, I want to make two comments. One is to thank nearly all of you who helped support the Food Bank for Monterey County in December. We had an incredible event, The Pocket. Thank you to our entire community for attending, but just the show of support from all of you was simply amazing and I want to thank you for that. The second is about Flanders. I think you all know that I am a board member of the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve and I want to let you know, we have created a working neighbor group and we are steadily working on a proposal for Flanders. We introduced Greg Dambrogio and I last March, just an initial idea of what we would like to do. And we have made great progress on that, along with this new neighbor group that is now officially a working group and part of the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. So, I know you dissolved your ad hocs last week, but I hope that you will take Flanders as a serious priority and we will await to hear what your decision is and move forward when you lay out what those plans will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And I have to say that your event was the most amazing thing I've ever seen. How many people went to it? Oh, my goodness, you missed it. Next year. Any other speakers?
Yes.
Okay. This is going to work. All right. Good evening, Mayor Byrne, city council members, city staff, and elders of Carmel by the Sea. I started this project seven years ago, but this has really grown to become more than me and it's become a dedicated group of people working towards a solution for the Flanders Mansion. This historic property has been vacant, as you know, since two thousand and four and it's costing taxpayers increasing maintenance costs each year. And this situation demands a solution and we are ready to help the city address it. As a professional storyteller, I have built a career translating complex missions into compelling stories. Producing over one hundred videos locally and operating my business on the Monterey Peninsula for thirteen years, I've worked with organizations like Carmel Cares and the Ventana Wildlife Society and I'm pleased to report that our feature film, Condor Canyon, is currently being packaged for national distribution on PBS. This brings me to Flanders Mansion. I'm not doing this project out of personal incentive. I'm doing this because I feel called for this project, like each of you has stepped up for your calling to be of service in the community in your way. I've, that Carmel deserves to have this treasure be restored and I've found others who share this commitment, who are willing to share this, to help carry the torch. Our nonprofit, Carmel Outlands, established over a year ago, is ready to collaborate with the city and groups like the neighbors and the organizations and the efforts that the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve have put together. Our goal, restore Flanders Mansion as a residents-first and public benefit space second, a place for small groups, cultural preservation, education, using existing parking spaces available. We are asking the city council to grant access to the property so that we can conduct a feasibility study to determine the costs of restoration. And to be clear, the costs of this study will come at no cost to the city. It will be incurred by the committee. And once we determine the costs, we will launch a capital campaign through the Community Foundation of Monterey County in the city's name to fully fund the restoration, again, at no cost to the city. So, how do you determine a priority? Is it the number of public comments? Is it the five hundred? Is it 550 people on our newsletter waiting for news about this issue? The board members and committees and groups focused on this? Flanders Mansion deserves action. Let's prioritize it. This year marks Flanders' 100th anniversary. Let's make sure it's around for another 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other speakers?
Good afternoon. I'm Janie Moore, longtime Carmel resident, and I have just two things on my mind. One is the recent fires that were having, current fires in Los Angeles. I'm sorry I was late to the meeting. This may have been addressed already, but I think that we need to perhaps have more meetings, more interfacing regarding trees and shrubbery and fences and all sorts of things, because we want to preserve this town. It could burn easily, and we would all be devastated, all of us. I think we'd be financially devastated and spiritually devastated, and very difficult to rebuild what we have, this treasure. So I hope that we can have more discussion about finding some middle ground and being more fire-wise and fire-safe. Next, I am wondering if it might be possible ever to start some kind of a liaison between residents and the city. People have issues that come up on their properties, and they become very frustrated, especially, you know, older, wonderful people, and it can be very difficult for people to try to make inroads, and sometimes people have to move, and I think that's pretty drastic, other than being able to solve the problems that they have. So I'm wondering if something like that might happen. I know liability comes in there, but just a group of people who would listen to the residents and then maybe be able to convey their concerns or their issues to the city, whatever, you know, organization or whatever department, rather, is appropriate. So thank you all for serving.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? Are there any hands raised? There are, four.
Brian Rosen, go ahead.
Hello, city council. Brian Rosen here. I just wanted to mention that there are certain things that are outside your purview that are most appropriate because they affect everybody. For example, how our representatives are voting on the issue. Mr. Panetta is who I'm thinking of, and is in Gaza, the horrible genocide, and I think it's very important for local governments to hold our representatives accountable. He's constantly been voting for to enable unconditional funding to do the worst kind of things. I don't believe in unconditional funding. That's, you have to have very strong conditions, and we need to set up, but the American people's psyche, the psyche of the American people is affected, just like the Germans were during World War II, and that's all the people in Carmel, too. And you're all being affected, and I'm being affected, so we can't ignore this. I mean, we're involved with a trauma related to this genocide that's going on, so this is an issue that's not being talked about, and we're just going on like it's not happening. And so I just wanted to bring it up. It bothers me. I think we have to have a nonviolent peacekeeping force over there, and we got to hold our, you know, we don't, if our representatives want to make for violence and war and killing, we got to hold, we got to really pressure them to do the right thing. I'm going to switch topics now that I've said that. I went to the MST meeting and brought up, they were bringing up the issue of the MST properties they wanted to sell, you know, and I brought up the Tamsi, famous Tamsi memo where, you know, Tamsi was planning on, MST and Tamsi were planning on selling property down by the, you know, the proposed Surf Bus Station at Fifth Street, and, you know, when you have under state law, transit, major transit line allows unlimited density of development almost, and so it would be hugely profitable. Now Lisa Reinheimer said that property wasn't on the list, but that's, according to the agenda packet, it, those were all the properties there, so I didn't really get an answer. And I had brought up the $120 million a mile that Lisa Reinheimer said it would cost to bring back the rail, and I didn't get an answer to that, and that Carmel's MST representative, Jeff Barron, is there, and he wasn't, he never holds them accountable, and, you know, so I think we really need, as the mayor was saying, and Mr. Dalv sounds like he's an independent person here and is going to do the right thing, we're hoping, that we'll really hold MST and Tamsi accountable, because it's not $120 million a mile, and it's not necessarily even $230 million, and the traffic problem is greatly exaggerated. It's morning southbound traffic for two hours, for the most part, except for some busy weekends.
Thank you, Brian.
And they're making that outlook like it's...
Thank you, Brian. Your time is up. Cindy? Sorry.
Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor. It's a funny thing, when you get a little older, sometimes the last word you hear ends up being the first word you say. So I almost said Mayor Barron, but that's wrong. So thank you very much for listening to me, Mayor, city council, and city staff. I just wanted to say thank you very much to you for bringing up the educational aspect before each city council meeting. It's really important that not only all of you at the same time listen to what is being said, although you may know a lot of it already, but also that we in the public understand what you are, what your responsibilities are and how municipal government works. When I first started doing this, many years ago, my brother called me up and said, Cindy, the council is considering selling the meadow in Mission Trail Park, and that launched my career in city government by defending that meadow against any thought of sale. And it took a couple of years to get the approval to keep Mission Trail Nature Preserve within its boundary in violet, but it is so important to learn who does what and how it's done. So thank you very much. I certainly do appreciate it, and it's very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Richard Kreitman, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, council, and community, I am Richard Kreitman, and I'm here to complain. Well, actually, to set the record straight. Our decision to close Gallery North was personal. We weren't forced out by an international realtor outbidding us, but we had a good business year and received a very fair lease renewal offer from our landlord, Lydic Gray for Properties, and we still chose to retire our business. After we informed them that we'd be out by December 31st, they then put the property on the market, and as we understand it, ultimately got over two and a half times the rent we would have paid with this international realtor winning the bid. I'd also like to say it's been a pleasure to be their tenants for four and a half years. Bob Lydic and Mike Draper, fine gentlemen, have been good landlords to us. And a little history which many may know, their mutual ancestor, John Martin, settled Mission Ranch in 1859. They've been here a while. I also appreciate Mary and Paul for thinking this was important enough to bring to the wider community's attention the issue of losing downtown retail storefronts to non-retail businesses. And I thank Malone Hodges, for those of you who read the article, for his comments, as quoted, because I agree with him wholeheartedly. For all the reasons Malone states, we absolutely need a strong realty sector, but by inference, I also believe he agrees with me, because none of his comments address the concerns I raise, which are only directed at keeping existing downtown commercial storefronts retail. If you walk around town, you enjoy our amazingly vibrant and diverse retail economy, probably the envy of most municipalities and visitor destinations. And it's not by accident, because over the decades, we have, as a community, scrupulously managed the type of businesses and the number of those businesses we permit. As Mary mentioned in the article, try opening another jewelry store or candy store, God forbid, another wine bar. By the way, you council are here to pick winners and losers. Every decision you make, as well as those of our commissions and boards, pick winners and losers. So I recommend strongly that our city attorney quickly identify defensible model ordinances from other municipalities that address this issue, and the council and city act with alacrity to pass such an ordinance. We did this some years ago when we realized there was nothing to keep downtown residential apartment owners from converting them to short-term rentals. We acted very quickly, and I think we lost no more than half a dozen rental units to applications for conversion before the ordinance passed. Please act on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Linda, go ahead.
Yes. Hello, mayor and council members. Linda Smith here. I just, following on what Cindy had to say about Mission Trail Nature Preserve, it's been a very long, very long battle to preserve it. I was there with Cindy and Skip and Kathy McFarland and my mother and Marjorie Fontana and a whole bunch of people who circulated a petition to keep it from being sold back in the 80s, when it was proposed to be sold, the meadow and the mansion. And we got 600 signatures in one week, and the council, you know, relented, thankfully, and it is still there. But it's been a very long, long journey, and I think what I would emphasize is we have to remember that Carmel is within the coastal zone, where under the jurisdiction of the Coastal Act, that includes Mission Trail Nature Preserve, Flanders Mansion is an inholding in an environmentally sensitive habitat, and only resource-dependent uses are allowed within and near an environmentally sensitive habitat. So that's a consideration I think we all need to keep in mind when we think of what happens to the Flanders Mansion. It probably is best used as a scientific resource, a very gentle use, something much more resource-dependent. Just wanted to put that bug in everybody's ear. Thanks.
Thanks, Linda. Looks like we don't have any online. Are there any other public comments in the chamber before we move on? All right. Thank you. We will now close public comment, and we're going to move on to announcements. City Administrator Rarick, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do. Quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Certainly, our thoughts are with the victims and those impacted by the tragic fires in Los Angeles. I've gotten a lot of calls and inquiries from the public about our preparedness. Chief Tomasi and the commander, Brandon and Chief Miller, our fire chief, will be meeting tomorrow to talk about, we'll eventually do a kind of a public meeting, but we are adding an item, with the mayor's blessing, to our February 3rd meeting to talk about how we exercise our fire hydrants, our fuel load reduction, our work with our partner agencies, the urbanized forest management plan, and climate change and climate adaptation plans that we've adopted, as well as the wildfire protection plan that we recently adopted, in addition to fuel load management. So we'll have a variety of topics, and again, we'll have that on the meeting of Monday, the 3rd of February. For Mrs. Byrne and the rest of the rest of the community, the past council did budget for sound and video work in this room, in the chambers, so Mr. Swanson and our IT director, Mr. Staker, are working on that. Hopefully, we can get that implemented just as soon as possible. Just remind everyone to just try to stay on top of the microphones just as much as you possibly can for the best sound quality. And then lastly, Janie Moore, Mrs. Moore, did ask about, we do have a great liaison relationship with a very active residents association, residents association in the village, the Carmel Residents Association. Mr. Swanson meets with them on a monthly basis. They become kind of a conduit for the CRA members, a membership organization, obviously, but we meet with them to talk about their perspectives on what's going on in the village and to get information from us. I make about a third of those meetings, Brandon, is that about right? So there is a venue for that. Again, it is one voice in the village, but we meet with everyone. So again, Mrs. Moore certainly encourage you to come and see us anytime. Buy a cup of coffee, go for a walk. So that's my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. City Attorney Pyrick, do you have any announcements?
Well, we did have a closed session last night, and there's no reportable action from that closed session.
All right. Thank you. Council members Barron, Draymoff, Booter, do you have any announcements?
I've got one.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few months back, I noticed in our monthly planning department reports that there was going to be a change of ownership between the Shell gas station, which has been here since 1964, and it's a award-winning historic building by architect Will Shaw, and it was going to become a Chevron station. So I was concerned that in that changeover that we might lose the beautiful historic, hand-carved wooden shell sign and some other memorabilia that was specific to that station. So I have very good news to report and several people to thank. We did save the signs there now at our local history library. So Brandon Swanson, thank you very much for your effort, and planning department, also Jake Sullivan, Public Works Department, Katie O'Connell at the local history library, and also Mary Schley for her coverage in the Carmel Pine Camp. So good news, the signs are at the library right now, and hopefully we'll find a way in the future that we could display them so the public can see them and continue to appreciate them. So thank you, everyone, for the role you played. It was a definite team effort.
Thank you. Good work on the sign, Alessandra. I wanted to point out to Ms. Moore's comments, hi, Janie, it's good to see you, that we are, all of us up here are liaisons to the city government. So I am constantly asked questions by constituents on the street. I have an email address. I know that everybody up here, all five of us, are asked questions and have email addresses, and we will help you, you know, I know I will, but I assume all of us will help you solve problems that you have. If you're having a problem with, you know, Brandon's department or a problem with Public Works or a problem with Skip or a problem with, well, maybe not one of the other council members, but if you're having a problem with the city government, we are all here to help you. So please, please reach out.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a quick update on the work we're doing on our housing element. So as you know, we're trying to come up with an amendment potentially to distribute the potential housing more organically through the village, have a more human scale to the, to any potential developments. And the work is going well. It's been, I mean, thousands of volunteer hours. We're in the process right now of canvassing the downtown area, so we're literally leaving no stone unturned and literally cataloging every leasable space in the community, every parcel, and so it's very comprehensive. We had our first meeting with HCD, and we're going to be meeting with them periodically, and we're hoping to submit something potentially in the late spring or early summer. I did want to mention, you know, we have some volunteer needs, you know, as I mentioned, we're out canvassing the downtown. We also have some sort of basic data entry needs, and it's not anything that you need like housing-specific, you know, knowledge or skills. It's really just kind of like basic computer proficiency. So if you or anyone you know has that skill set, I'm talking about just being able to flip between a few different windows, being able to, you know, efficiently navigate an app on your phone, and you're interested in helping the city on this initiative, which is a pretty big undertaking, please send me an email and would love to have your help. So thank you.
All right. I'd just like to mention that we've made some forward momentum with the Harrison Library Restoration Project, which has sort of been going on in the background for a while now, and the 19-person committee did make a selection of a, an architect, which will, is now subject to two contracts that have to be negotiated and approved by the council, but it's still a very positive step that we took, and a press release has gone out, so you might see some stories on it soon about how that actually happened, and it's an exciting... And it's an exciting project, and we're looking forward to having some movement on that in the future. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Any other comments before we close this? All right. So I'm going to close the comments, and we're now going to move on to the Orders of Business section of the agenda. These are items that require city council discussion, debate, direction to staff, or action. The first item on the agenda is Consider Resolution 2025-06, Approving a Supplemental Budget Appropriation to the Fiscal Year 2024 to 2025 Budget to Award $1,000 Discretionary Grant to the Carmel Padre Parents for the Class of 2025 Sober Grad Night. Chipper Nova, do you have a brief summary on this item to give before we go to council questions and open public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I can speak on this item. It's pretty straightforward. Every year, we do a discretionary grant program, and it doesn't always align with the high schools' programs or needs. So last year, they, actually, they missed the deadline to apply for this discretionary grant to help fund the Sober Grad Night. So this is a little bit of an off-cycle request, but they said that any amount they would be very grateful for. As you know from the staff report, the Sober Grad Night is really important to keep all the graduates safe and off the road and, you know, having fun, alcohol-free on their graduation night. So if the council wishes, they can approve this resolution, which would give a $1,000 discretionary grant and just make a slight amendment to the current fiscal year budget. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Nova. Are there any questions from the council? No? Seeing no questions, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a comment? All right. We'll close public comment, and do we have any further discussion on this item from the council? All right. So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-06.
Second? It's the second.
Okay. Nice. Councilmember Baron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Might add that this doesn't preclude anybody in the public to make a donation as well to the Sober Grad Night. It's actually, it surprised me with my Carmel Gives work, we give them a nice grant every year, and it's not nothing. They have to raise something like $60,000, I think. So any help you can give, any amount would be helpful to them. All right. So now we'll move on to public hearings. The first public hearing, item number two on the agenda, is to consider adoption of Resolution 2025-07, adopting the Historic Context Statement update in a manner fully in conformity with the Coastal Act. I'd like to introduce, Brandon?
Oh, I was just going to advance the slides for her.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So I'm just going to take a quick second, oh, thanks, thanks, Evan, just a quick second here and get the PowerPoint up, and Catherine Wallace is going to be joining us via Zoom and actually doing the presentation. Part of the reason for me coming up is to get the presentation pulled up, but the other reason for me to stand up is because Catherine Wallace is very humble and will not give herself credit as much as credit she deserves for this. So I just want to make sure to recognize the wonderful work that Catherine did with all of our partners, past consultants, our Historic Resources Board, our staff. And so I'm excited for her to tell you, this is really a celebration of a long effort to update our city's Historic Context Statement and get the final stamp of approval from all of you tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Wallace, and we'll go ahead and, Catherine, we've got the clicker here, so we'll go ahead and move through the PowerPoint for you when you just tell us to go to the next slide.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Brandon, and I do apologize that I am presenting from home this evening. So I'm very pleased to present to you the Historic Context Statement update. And while I'll be giving this short presentation, really, all the credit does go to our wonderful consultant, past consultants. We have Kent Seedy and also Seth Bergstein in, excuse me, in the audience today. So next slide, please. As background, the Historic Context Statement is a document that the city first adopted in 1994. It was again updated in 1997, and then in 2008. The 2008 update covered the period from 1940 to 1965. And then, very recently, in 2022, the city completed an update that covered the years 1966 to 1986. The Historic Context Statement is a document that is one of the appendices in our general plan, and it's also a document that we are required, our municipal code requires us to update it every five years. So we were a little behind in finishing up this important effort. Next slide, please. So what is a Historic Context Statement? It's a narrative of historic, social, and architectural context, but mostly architectural, and it gives us a framework to understand the significance of built resources, buildings, why they're important, and also the level of integrity needed to qualify a building as historic. And integrity in its simplest terms is, does it still look like it did when it was first constructed? Next slide, please. So two years ago, 2022, we did Phase One of this project, and as I mentioned, that update effort added, tacked on 20 years to the end of the document, whereas previously, we didn't have any context for that kind of late mid-century era. And that effort was funded by a $30,000 grant from the California Office of Historic Preservation. And we did use past consultants for that work. The council adopted it in December of '22, and then the California Coastal Commission also accepted it as a local coastal program amendment in July of 2023. Next slide, please. Which puts us to the Phase Two effort, which we've been working on this past year, 2024. We received another grant from OHP, which is really fantastic and I think pretty rare. So it goes to show that our consultant did great work with Phase One, and we did bring past consultants back for Phase Two. Like I said, $40,000 from the state, and then the council did approve the full preliminary PSA for $79,000 back in January. And we have three main project goals, consistent chronological themes, excuse me, consistent formatting, and streamlined content. So I'll just very quickly go through these three goals. Next slide. As you can see here, our first goal was to really settle into chronological themes. On the left of the slide, you'll see the old themes, five of them there, and then on the right, the new themes. These are essentially like chapters. So as you can see, we previously had topical themes. On the left there, let's say you're looking into a building that was constructed in 1905, you would have to open up four different chapter themes to learn about what might have been going on during that time period. We've completely reorganized the document so that you have chronological themes, where if you know a date you're interested in, you simply open up the document and you can go straight to that time period. The new themes have, I think, these really interesting theme names. Fascinatingly, our consultant has a background in screenwriting, so I think the theme names are very interesting and kind of catch you and bring you in, and you have to read to find out more. So it's Pre-History and Hispanic Settlement, that one's pretty straightforward. And then we get into Carmelo, kind of the late 1800s, and then Sea Coast of Bohemia, kind of the early 1900s, Village in the Forest, Post-War Development, and then the Carmel Dynamic continues. So each theme opens with a great historic photo, kind of that represents that era, and then, as you'll notice, many, many more historic photos within each theme. Next slide, please. The next goal we had was consistent formatting. So the old document, as I mentioned, was put together by many different authors over many decades. So we wanted to institute very consistent formatting. So within each theme, you'll find a historic context narrative describing the major events in that era, the people of significance, followed by architectural-specific narrative, what was going on in terms of architectural development, followed by a section on associated property types and then registration requirements. Property types being, let's say, residential, commercial, that kind of thing, and then registration requirements. Is it eligible for listing on perhaps our local inventory or even the state or national register? Next slide, please. Here's an example of the formatting that you'll find within the residential architectural development section. So you'll have a style name. Let's see here. So this style is Carmel Vernacular, followed by the dates that you would have found this style primarily constructed, followed by photographs, and then introduction text about, you know, what is this style? How did it come about? How was it reflected in Carmel specifically? Followed by a bullet point list of character-defining features, where, you know, if you're trying to evaluate a building, you can look at this and say, hmm, does it have this roof form, this fenestration pattern being this pattern of windows and doors? Does it use these materials? That kind of thing. And then you'll find a list of representative local buildings, followed by a chart, which again goes over what does it take to be listed on our local inventory or state or national registers? Next slide, please. And then we can come back to this. Apologies about the spacing, but this is just a quick slide about the different architectural styles we found to be most prominent in Carmel in each theme or each time period. Next slide, please. Our last goal was for this document to really be streamlined, and I am going to read this quote because I think it's so important. "Historic context statements are not intended to be a chronological recitation of a community's significant historical events or noteworthy citizens or a comprehensive community history. Rather, historic context statements need to be direct, to the point, and easily understood by the general public." So this document is not an all-encompassing history of our community, and just because a resource type or a specific style or an architect or individual isn't in this document doesn't mean that it might be found to be still historically significant. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of this sentence in italic is an example of some of the content we were finding in the old context statement. You know, as you can see, we've got a mention of an individual, but it really, it's not very specific. You know, the sentence, and there wasn't more in the document about this individual, but it doesn't say, hey, where is his house? You know, how has he acted in village life? So we found a lot of language like this that we found to be just not very appropriate to be in a historic context statement. Something like this would be uncovered in the process of doing a property-specific, like a deep dive into a specific property, which we call an intensive survey. You know, research about an individual and how they might be significantly associated with a property. We'll find that in a property-specific report, and it doesn't necessarily need to be in the context statement. So a lot has changed since the 1990s when the context statement was first authored. It has served us well since the 1990s, but we just are very pleased to bring it up to current industry standards and, you know, cut out some of the things that weren't serving us anymore. Next slide, please. So while I can assure you that the document has been streamlined, it has also gotten bigger. There are more pages, and you ask why? That's because there are so many new photographs added. Prior to 2022, the document had no photos, and then in 2022, we were able to add photos just for that last 20-year tack-on at the end. But this go-around, you'll find this document absolutely stuffed with beautiful, interesting photographs, which of course has made it a bit longer, but it's worth it. And it's also longer because we've added new sections, such as how to use this document and evaluation criteria language and other things like that. And then the appendices are fairly robust, and they've just largely been maintained. Next slide, please. So as you recall, the council did approve the contract last January, and then in March, the Historic Resources Board went ahead and approved the new table of contents, this real departure and organization of the document, which I give so much credit to our consultant. It's almost like if you're doing a renovation project, once you get into the house, you realize there's a lot more problems than you thought. This document was similar to that. It was such a big undertaking just in terms of citation, you know, tracking down citations and, like I said, removing unnecessary language from the document, completely reorganizing it from a thematic to a chronological format. It was a lot of work. So throughout the spring, summer, a consultant worked on developing the document and the HRB review drafts along the way. And then, so the HRB has reviewed the 100% draft and recommended the council adopt it, as has the Planning Commission. Since the Planning Commission recommended adoption by the council, we did respond to one comment, and we incorporated it, and that's simply to simplify the header footer, which we did do so. In your packet, you'll find an example of the old footer and then incorporated the new. And so that brings us to today. The city council is to consider adoption of this document. Next slide, please. In terms of SEQA, Historic Context Statements are exempt under Class 6 of the California Environmental Quality Act, specifically called Information Collection. It's really an information gathering activity. It's part of a study that could lead to an action, but it's nothing that we're approving or funding. It's not a project at this time. Next slide, please. So with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution before you this evening. And final adoption will ultimately require a local coastal program amendment because this is an appendices of our general plan, and so it will not be effective until and unless approved by the Coastal Commission, and that's a process that staff will initiate later this winter. We do have our wonderful consultants there in the room with you this evening. I'm available for questions, as are they. Thanks, Brandon.
Guess the presentation over. Thank you, Catherine. That was fantastic. Great work. Are there any questions that the council has at this point? No questions. I guess you did a good job, Catherine.
I have a quick question.
We've got one.
I guess, Brandon, I don't know if we saw Catherine, but Brandon, if you're here in the room, just, I guess for the benefit of the public, could you just kind of outline the process for designating a property as historic? So, you know, a property hits that 50-year-old threshold, and then what?
And then you have to do a historic evaluation. So we have one of our on-call consultants who are professional historians that perform a historic evaluation to determine if the property is historic, and if it's not, that determination is made that it's not historic. There's a process whereby we let the Historic Resources Board know that that determination has been made. They have the opportunity to call it up if they'd like to discuss that further, but assuming that doesn't happen, that determination remains for five years, and every five years after that, you have to renew that. If a property is historic, then it goes onto the city's records as a historic property. And a lot of people think and feel that that's a death knell for a property, but that's actually not true. You can still develop a property that is historic, there's just different standards whereby you have to do it, and they're actually very specific. It's all the Secretary of Interior standards. You just have to do it a very specific way. The city currently doesn't have, we have a moratorium on our Mills Act program, but in the past, when you had a property that was historic, you have an opportunity to gain a Mills Act contract, which helps with property taxes. So there are benefits sometimes as well to having a historic property, but that's generally the process. There's that determination of whether the project, property... property is historic or not first.
And so the trigger is the age?
Age 50 years.
Once it hits 50 years, then you've got your list of properties.
Yes. There are, not to get too geeky on this, but there are some exceptions to being less than 50 years old. And this is all enumerated in our code. But if something is so exceptional and so historic, you know, say 35, 40 years, if it was, you know, an architect, and this is the only example of their work, and we know, there are qualifications where it can become eligible. But for the most part, 99.9% of the time, it's that 50-year threshold.
So basically, you'll look and say, hey, we've got, whatever, 70 properties built in 1975. And so over the course of that year, at some point over the next...
Oh, good question. No, it's not a proactive process. So it's when someone comes forward to process an application on a property, that triggers us looking to see, is it 50 years old? Yes or no? And then there's the decision tree. If it's yes, is there an existing historic evaluation? And is it still current? If there isn't one, then we do one.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Booter, if I might add as well, this historic context statement, no new properties are being added to any historic list by adopting this historic context statement. This is, as I said, this is an informational document that the public can reference, our consultants will use, staff will use when we go through that individual process of evaluating specific properties as they come in to request historic evaluations. But no properties will be newly listed as historic through this context statement adoption process.
That's a great point, Catherine. And actually triggered one more point that the council probably and the public would be interested in. You can request a historic evaluation without there being a development project. And we do see that sometimes. Let's say a property is up for sale. We'll see a real estate agent or the property owner request a historic evaluation so people know what they're getting into. We do encourage that. I mean, you should know what the status of your property is.
All right. Thank you. This is a good example of the amount of work that it takes to update these city documents. And I've been doing a project in the background, looking at them because it's important we all understand them. And there are a number that need to be updated. So I'm happy to see that we're really good at doing that now. Thank you. Let's open it up for public comment. Anybody want to make a comment about this? Eric?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Eric Dyer, member of the Historic Resources Board and liaison to this process. And all I just wanted to say is a big thank you to Catherine and Marnie at the city, as well as to Seth and Kent for doing such a great job. I mean, this is such an amazingly improved document now that's really usable for the public and understandable for the public. And yeah, we're proud of it on our board. So thank you very much.
Thanks to you too. And to all the HRB members, some of whom are here, thank you so much. Know how much effort you put into this. So I'm going to close public comment.
We have two hands raised.
We have hand raised. That's right. Linda, go ahead.
Yes, I know a lot of work went into this, and it's got a lot of wonderful parts to it. I especially liked that earlier part about the simple living and the beginnings of Carmel in terms of the arts and crafts movement. Because of course, those early Carmelites are the ones that set the tone for the future development of Carmel and the vision for it that has brought all its blessings to us to this day. So I guess the one thing I'm concerned about is that there doesn't seem to be a lot of mention of the native Monterey pine forest, which is so essential to Carmel's historic context. And I wish there was more, especially, you know, more that relates to the coastal act as well. Because part of the reason that Carmel has its exclusion, its categorical exclusion, is because it has been trusted to protect and preserve its native Monterey pine forest, its urbanized forest, as well as its cultural accoutrement that were actually designed to fit within that forest. So I worry about that. I wish there was more emphasis on the forest and the part that is played and should continue to play in the development of our town because it is so essential to our character. And there's one other aspect that I wish you would reinstate. The section in the old historic context statement, 70, page 70 to 80, talks about the arts and crafts movement because that was the time when Carmel was forged. That was the time when its soul was developed. And it's such an interesting section, really gives you a sense. Now, I live in the 1905 Murphy-built cottage that my grandmother built. And if you didn't know something about the people that peopleled this place and what they did and who they were, you wouldn't really get a sense of this place, of what it actually is. It would just be a structure. It would be an interesting structure, a charming structure, but it would not have the soul that it has if you didn't know the story. So that little section in the prior Historic Resource Context Statement had a lot of information, pages 70 to 80, about the development of the arts and crafts movement and the cultural development of Carmel that just is so fascinating, really brings life to it in a way that I think just a more kind of mechanistic description loses in context, although it's important. And I realize that a lot of work has been done to organize it properly and et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. So Linda, what I heard you say was you thought there was a section in the old document that you felt should be included in the new one?
Oh, where'd she go?
Just to clarify, are you there? Could you unmute her?
Yeah. Go ahead, Linda.
I just want, I want to make sure we heard what you were asking so that Catherine could respond.
Yes, it's pages 71 through 80. And let's see. Yeah, it's Development of Arts and Culture, 1904 to 1986.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have Catherine respond to you when we're finished.
Take a look at that. Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Cindy?
Thank you, Mayor Byrne, members of the council, city staff, and particularly the Planning Department and Catherine Wallace. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, when the final historic context statement of the general plan was presented by Catherine Wallace, I had read the document discovering several factual errors. Mentioning them, I mentioned them at the meeting, and it was suggested that Catherine and I meet, which we did. Catherine generously spent one and a half hours of her valuable time reviewing my comments. Catherine is a most valuable and very important member of the Planning Department who explores and presents the historic significance of buildings under consideration for modification. In addition to the use of staff and a consultant, I believe members of the public who have grown up here and have been involved in our communities be formal advisors when historic information is under consideration. In addition to myself, whose mother, Marjorie Lloyd, was considered the unofficial Carmel historian, Robin Eschelman, great niece of MJ Murphy, an archivist of the Murphy Buildings in Carmel, and Julie Work Beck, directly related to TA Work, who has contributed to the historic development of Pacific Growth. Both Murphy and Work owned lumberyards. We three would be delighted to help review historic documents prior to them being presented, picking up factual errors that could be corrected prior to presentation. Specifically, my father was listed as an architect, and he wasn't. He was a builder. And one of the builders was listed, one of the architects was listed as a builder. Those are just two. They're very, very minor when you consider them from the overall bulk of the historic context statement. But when something is published, it becomes fact. And my dad was not an architect. He was a builder who drew plans on the back of an envelope and took them down to Tommy Elston, who drew them up to take to the Planning Department so they could be passed so he could build the house. So thank you very much. And I do hope you will consider adding Robin, Julie, and me to some kind of a informal advisory group to help review documents before they become finalized. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Richard Kreitman, go ahead.
He's muted. Thank you. I don't know if this is too specific. It has to do with the Scout House, which many of you know I've been working on, as well as other people, for now a couple of decades to try to get it open again and available to the community. And in terms of historical context, I looked recently on the city's list of historical properties, and the Scout House is not on there. So responding to Brandon, is like how a Realtor or a potential owner or owner of a property can ask for it to be reviewed, can I, as a member of the community, ask the city to review the historic nature of its own property, the Scout House? Now, I don't know. I may be wrong in doing this because perhaps as non-listed as historic property, it will be easier to get it restored and working again for the community, or maybe it'll make it more difficult. So that's my question. How do we, can I just ask the city to review its own property? Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon, you want to answer that question? Might as well jump in now.
It never hurts to ask, I guess, is the response to that. I'll connect with Mr. Kreitman because I'm not sure about the historic, whether or not it's listed and where it is or not. So I'll look into that, and I just don't have the answer off the top of my head, but...
So I guess, Richard, you've asked, and Brandon is going to get back to you.
Yeah, I'll connect with you, Mr. Kreitman, and then we'll report back to the council and let you guys know what we find out.
Okay, thank you. And Catherine, did you want to respond to Linda's comment?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I also would like to thank her and anyone else who took the time to read this document or at least look through it. I realize it's a big document, so thank you for taking that time. In terms of the arts and crafts references, you'll notice in our Sea Coast of Bohemia theme, which covers the years 1902 to 1921, we do have a section on the craftsman style. And arts and crafts, craftsmen are a bit of interchangeable terms. So we do have a significant dedicated section on craftsmen. So all of that language absolutely made it into the new document. And if our consultant Seth is in the room, he can also speak extensively to that and the importance of that style to our community. And then regarding the forest, there are references throughout the document. There's not a dedicated section because, as I said, this document is really laser-focused on architectural content. But there's certainly references to how Frank Devendorf gave folks trees when they purchased lots, and they were encouraged to plant them, and just little tidbits like that that are woven throughout. In terms of the local coastal program, this document ends in 1986. So we didn't have a local coastal program at that time. We didn't have a historic preservation program. As the years go by, we'll keep adding on to this document. We'll keep tacking on, you know, more and more content and context. You know, one day when we get to the early 2000s, when we went through that Coastal Commission, local coastal program process, I think that would be an appropriate time to dive more into that. But I'd like to invite Seth up. He might have comments on both, you know, the craftsman style certainly being heavily featured in this document and the importance of the forest. But Linda, thank you for your comments.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would remind you that we are working, we are updating the Carmel Forest Management Plan now. And that's a very seminal document that deals solely with the urbanized forests. So again, it's a kind of a companion piece to a lot of our documents, not the least of which is our historic context statement.
Thanks, Chip. And I just wanted to add something because Seth pointed out to me, and he may want to come up and add a little color to Catherine, what Catherine said. But the previous document is not thrown in the garbage. It's actually just retired and will live at the city's library. So the section, those 10 pages or so that were mentioned, still exists as part of like a reference library as well.
But it won't be available online?
That's correct.
So you'd have to come into City Hall and see it. Okay, thank you.
Or go to the libraries.
I actually thought it wasn't available online. Maybe Catherine did.
Okay.
I don't know. I just got surprised.
All right. Catherine, can you correct me if I'm wrong there? The previous version, are we going to maintain it available online or is it just at the library?
We can certainly make it available online as well. It's also, both the old and the new documents can be keyword searchable. So if there was something in the old document, like the phrase "arts and crafts," you can search that in the new document too and search craftsmen because I think a lot of the content will just be under that label craftsmen.
All right. Thank you. So any other discussion from the council? One more public comment. Hi, Kent.
Simply that the Scout House was on the 2001-2003 Historic Resource Inventory. It was listed. So it's with the state because we sent the list to the state for review specifically. And I don't know where the document, the DPR 523, got off to, but it didn't get off to in my house.
So Brandon will have to check that out. And Richard, you've got your answer. All right, we're going to close public comment. And is there any...
There's one.
Oh, we've got one more. All right. Melanie, come on up.
Melanie Billig. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. There's been, as we all agree, extensive work on this document, and we're all very, very grateful for that. I'd just like to point out something that concerns me. We're talking about a context statement. Well, what is the context? To me, context means, where are all of these, I can't get this thing undone, where are all of these architectural edifices located? They are located in the middle of a natural forest. The forest is what links this whole community. It is its history. And so, you know, when looking at the document, I always believe, whether it's the current one or this one, new one, that context is extremely important, just like if you're talking about any building, it's the context of its neighborhood. It's the context of the community. And so I think that, as Linda mentioned, there needs to be more emphasis on the forest in this, not just little snippets here and there. And the other thing is, remember after the San Francisco Fire? There were huge numbers of people who moved down here. They were primarily artists, but they were also just ordinary people and professional people. And they helped build this community with a vision of what this community should be and what we should be continuing to this day. And that is the types of architecture that were built and how they were nestled in this forest. So I'd like to just ask you to consider something a little more warm and fuzzy in this document that it seems to be overemphasizing, streamlining, and get some feeling for what this community really was like when it was begun and what the people envisioned, what their feelings were. Because people at those times were very passionate about coming to this village and making it a very special place. And both Arlandia's plan, as well as our general plan and the local coastal plan, all talk about how unique this village is. And why is it unique? It's because it's in the middle of this natural forest and has an extraordinary environment. So I just ask you to take that into consideration and give it more emphasis in this document. Thanks a million.
Thank you, Melanie. Catherine, do you want to comment on that?
Well, Melanie's correct. There's not a dedicated section in this document about the forest. A few other... A few other references that did come to mind, as I mentioned, our, you know, our early developer gave out trees with the first sale of the original lots. The document does describe how the city was laid out with meandering streets that went around trees in the middle of the road and such. And there's also a lot of discussion about how our early buildings were built out of redwood, our natural building material. There's likely more. Those are just a few of the references to the forest and the unique building materials and character here in Carmel.
Thank you, Catherine. I have a question.
Yes.
Once we vote on this document, are any edits allowed in it if you discover something is wrong, like typos even? Can you edit the document making minor changes without coming back to us? Yes.
I'm quite comfortable making a typo correction. The next plan, the next step, because this was a grant-funded project, we're under a pretty strict timeline to secure council adoption and submit the product to the state for reimbursement. So if there are revisions the council would like to see, you could place a condition of approval on your resolution tonight.
But in general, you cannot make revisions to it without coming back to us in the future?
Perhaps I could weigh in on that one, Mayor. What I've seen sometimes is that what the city council would do would be to say that the council would delegate to the city administrator in coordination with the city attorney to approve any non-substantive changes to the agreement. That way, if there's some language that needs to be revised, it wouldn't need to come back to you. But if it involves, you know, money, or how long the agreement is for, or substantive issues, if you will, then that would need to come back.
Okay, thank you. All right. Kent?
With permission?
Yes, come on.
You don't lie, right, Jordan?
I'll remind you that when Mr. Duckworth came here, he made a grid pattern out of Carmel. Photographs of the time, there was no forest except the periphery. Around Camino Real, there were no trees to the ocean. We have photographs from 1905 and the like. Devendorf was the man who replanted Carmel, and I think that's important to note.
Thank you.
Hi, Seth Bergstein here with PAST. Just wanted to be available to all of you. And by the way, congratulations to the new members, and this is my first city council here. I've gone to a million commission meetings for historic and planning, but never city councils, so...
Congratulations.
I'm enjoying it. It's very interesting. But to speak about this historic context statements and what should be in them, just addressing some of the comments, particularly the Zoom comments, primarily an architectural document, it's relating the built environment to the contextual events that happen within each thematic time period. So when we get to this Devendorf period, we have the earliest development of... We have the second theme, so we're a little bit beyond the earliest, but we're the most significant development of Carmel, what we're calling the Sea Coast of Bohemia theme. And that's when we have this influx, everybody coming post-earthquake. And it's discussed within that historic contextual section. I know because I've been working on this document almost exclusively for my company for 10 months now. I've turned down so much work just to get this done. So any question you guys have, I'd be glad to discuss. But we tried to group the parks and open space. When you look at architectural development, it's one of our property types. And again, all of these sections are done exactly the same way. And the reason why we did that is because now when you go for your next 20-year update, any consultant can easily scope out now, oh, all I have to do is do a summary in architectural development, figure out my property types, figure out my character-defining features, figure out my integrity, and I'm done. There's no... You know, even when we did the update, it was very difficult to figure out how to update the original document, but anyway. So we named that next theme Village in a Forest, following Sea Coast of Bohemia, for that exact reason, and that is the trees are planted, you know, and they're growing slowly, and there's a lot of historic photos in these sections, and you'll see this development. And I think thematically, it's in there enough. And just to let the commenter know, in this document, it's not really an environmental document. There are other environmental documents that deal specifically with natural issues that the city may have. But I don't know if I would call it a... It's a native pine forest outside where we are, but it was largely planted, as Kent said. So anyway, and any other questions as long as I'm up, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you for coming up. It's nice to see you and welcome. Where do you live?
I live in Monterey, actually. When I first moved here 15 years ago, started and brought my company down here. I lived in PG, so I had a PO box in PG. So my business address is PG, but I'm now living in Monterey.
So this is, PAST is your company?
Yeah, PAST Consultants LLC. I'm also one of your two on-call historic consultants. So I'm consulting here with Catherine and Evan and Brandon all the time, dealing with historic issues. I helped with the Ghoul Building restoration. Oh, my company with Kent's assistance also did the Habs photographs for Flanders Mansion. So if that comes up, I know that was earlier, but if that comes up, anybody who wants to contact us about that, we have images and a historical study of it. So yeah, I've been down here about 15 years now.
If I could speak for the council, I really want to thank you for your dedication to this project.
I appreciate that.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, and it's hard to get everything in. And then some of the other policy questions, you've asked about what's historic. The other important thing about these documents is they're somewhat legal documents. That first chapter that we did basically lays out everything for resources here. It lays out a Phase 1, Phase 2 assessment, it lays out the standards. There's also a lot of language from the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Register Program that explains what these documents are. So we made sure it really has a firm foundation. So anyway.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Now, are there any more public comments? Sorry. I think you had three minutes.
Can we start our council discussion?
Yes, go ahead. I'm going to close public comment and make it go to discussion.
All set?
Yes.
Okay. So anyway, I just wanted to echo the comments and thank Catherine and the Historic Resources Board, and Seth and Kent at PAST Consultants for the work you've done. It certainly is an improvement, as Eric Dyer said. I think the strongest aspects of it are the photos. They are really clear and really good representatives of the historic properties and the characteristics and features that we're looking for. And then the little list of the specific historic-defining features for each style is very helpful as well, so that is much appreciated. I think it would be nice to still have the previous documents online for research purposes, so that would be helpful as well. And just wanted to thank Kent Seavey for all the work you've done. I want to say it's close to 50 years or so with Carmel and with the Monterey Peninsula and everything you've done for historic preservation. Thank you. It's so much appreciated.
Well, some of your book's photos are still in the document. Remember, I emailed you about that.
Yes. Thanks.
Jeff?
Thank you. I'd just echo Alessandra's comments. Thank you, Catherine. I counted seven meetings... Oh, Catherine. I counted seven meetings and one more to go. It's a good document. It's a nice improvement. The pictures are great, and thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd echo those comments. You know, Catherine, nice job. I think it's amazing to have somebody on the staff, you know, who could shepherd a project like this through. And then Seth, you know, it really is great, and it was helpful to hear you say how you've been focusing on it, and it reads like that. I mean, when it comes to writing, I'm a tough grader, and it's a really good read. I mean, it's really... I felt like I was reading a book the past couple nights. And the pictures, I mean, again, they really do... It's kind of amazing to think that the document had no pictures until two years ago. And you come away from this with kind of this sweeping, you know, panorama of Carmel's history, and I just think it's fantastic. And the points that you made about trying to make it readable and not having these sort of random, you know, names with no context. I mean, you read a lot of government documents that have those kinds of things, and I just think you guys, the whole team, did a great job with this document. I had a process point on... You know, and this comes up on a lot of things, and it's understandable because, you know, there were like seven public meetings. But, you know, we tend to be sometimes up against these grant deadlines, and I think I was reading in there, like, we're pretty tight against a deadline on this one. And, you know, just in general, you know, I think it'd be great for us to try, if at all possible, to just leave a little bit more room on these things because it kind of... You know, I think everyone likes the document, but it can present a little bit of like a fait accompli where it's like, hey, it would be tough for us to sit here and say, hey, let's go back and like meaningfully change this document if it's going to run up against like a grant deadline. You know, I know the point of this is we're, you know, looking at the historical context statement itself and, you know, the different eras and styles, et cetera. But, you know, it does present an opportunity that oftentimes I think the council doesn't have to think about just sort of how we approach historic resources in general. And, you know, there's a couple interesting things that just sort of struck me from like kind of a policy standpoint. The first one is, and I understand the Historic Resources Board is going to, you know, review any properties that come up, but, you know, you would think that there would be some language about potentially having like a bit of a higher burden of proof on newer properties. You know, we're sort of at the point now where we're looking at properties potentially built in 1975, right, which... And so that was just sort of an interesting thing that I noticed in reading through. So I started to read through the municipal code on historic resources. And then the other piece was the tests that we use to classify something for the Carmel inventory. And it was interesting because when you look at the criteria, obviously it's got to be at least 50 years old, and then there's these four criteria, right? Associated with events that made a significant contribution, associated with the lives of persons, important to, et cetera, et cetera, embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, region, or method of construction. And that one, that third one, I think, is where a lot of properties enter the inventory. It embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, region, or method of construction. And then within that one, there are four additional criteria, one of which is, and it's an or logic, so any of those can trigger it to be historic, right? It's not an and logic. And it's be a good example of an architectural style or type of construction recognized as significant in the historic context statement. And so that was sort of interesting to me just from a standpoint of, you know, something can potentially get on here just if we think it's a good example of, you know, a particular style. And so now we're looking at, you know, properties that were built in the '70s and, you know... You know, I think just sort of looking at it from a policy standpoint, I would have expected to see... I would hope to see a bit more of a tapering over time in terms of properties that get added to the inventory. And then, you know, at some point, there has to, I think, be, and I know this happens at the level of the Historic Resources Board, but just kind of a discussion about, you know, what do we want to preserve, right? You know, just because something represents a style that's been built at some point, you know, these are important decisions because you're taking a piece of private property and you're saying, hey, we're going to add some pretty significant restrictions on what can happen with that property, you know, in perpetuity. And so I think those are important. I think we're at 287 properties that are designated historic. And, you know, Brandon, I don't know off the top of your head, how many properties do we have total in town?
About 3,600 single-family dwellings.
Yeah. So, you know, it's like approaching the 10%, you know, kind of range. So, you know, those were just sort of my observations, and I just thought, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, you know, at least mention some of those things, and so I wanted to take that opportunity.
Thanks, Hans. That was interesting. So I think he brought up a good point is, for all of us who want to participate in these processes, obviously, the earlier you get involved in the process... I know Brandon's shaking his head. The earlier you get involved in this process, because there have been a lot of steps that you could have participated in all the way along, all of us. So it obviously, as we get closer to the end, it gets much more difficult to make a change, so... But I think as we sit here, I think we've got a pretty good product, and unless anyone else has a comment, I'd like to look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07, adopting the historic context statement update in a manner fully in conformity with the Coastal Act.
Could I ask whether that would include potential changes as approved by the city administrator with the city attorney that were discussed?
I think it's okay if we do typos, but not anything that's significant to the substance. I mean, if there's a typo or something that's misspelled, you know, or a date that might be, you know, inverted or something, but...
So with typos?
Yeah, just typos.
I'll second that. All right.
All right. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Councilmember Drummond?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. HRB, nice job. So we're going to take a short break here, 10 minutes, and a hard 10 minutes. So back here, we're going to get started at 6:25. Thank you. If everybody could take a seat. We're going to reopen here. We need Brian. There he is. Ready? All right. We'll now move on to the last item on the agenda. Resolution 2025-08, consideration of a partial after-the-fact permanent encroachment permit. Perm EN 23-077 givens for development in the public right-of-way, which includes a series of terrace retaining walls, a new staircase with handrail, and a new driveway retaining wall located on the southeast corner of Torres Street and Fifth Avenue in the single-family residential R1 district. This item was continued from the December 3 city council meeting at the applicant's request. Brandon?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you please introduce, are you going to do it?
I'll do the presentation, yes. Thank you.
He's our staff member who's going to be giving a presentation on this item.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be presenting this item. Marnie Waffle is here. She was the project planner, planner on the house. So maybe we can tag team your questions, but I'll be giving you your presentation this evening. So as you mentioned, we're here to discuss an encroachment permit. A little bit of background, there was a project that Ms. Waffle processed through the planning commission back in March of 2023. One of the conditions, which is the standard condition of approval on our projects, is to remove existing encroachments in the right-of-way or obtain the required encroachment permits. So there are a number of existing encroachments at this site, and we'll go through those in a minute. But that was a standard condition of approval. There was the applicant, the property owners did decide to file an application for keeping those existing permanent encroachments and also add some new ones. The main stated reason is for erosion control. As you mentioned, Mayor, we were here in December and then this item was continued. So this is, this is just a diagram that shows you what's existing and what's proposed for new. All the blue circles or elongated figures are around existing encroachments. You have a driveway, a stone retaining wall, which maybe is an overstatement. It's a bunch of, of boulders stacked up, wood retaining wall, some landscaping, and a wood staircase on the northeast side of the property. The proposed new encroachments, the bulk of it is a terrace landscape wall set. There's two of them. You can see those on the, I guess, northwest corner of the property. Stone landscape curb next to the driveway, and a new set of stairs in addition to the existing ones on the northeast side and some landscaping. Here's some street views. This is the view from Torres Street. You can see the state of the, the, the right-of-way right now. It's in its natural state. There's an old stump there. That would be slated for removal at the direction of the planning commission as well. Here's on Fifth Avenue, you can see also in its natural state. It is a sloped, a sloped hill. The test for encroachments, this is, this is worth pointing out here. We've talked about this with you before. At the staff level, the staff needs to make all of these findings here in front of you, all seven of these in the positive. For, in order for staff, which includes really the city administrator or his, his designees, all, all seven of these have to be made in the affirmative. As we've discussed in the past, when an item is referred up to the city council, you do have an option to, to make findings that you don't, you don't have to find all seven of these. You can, you can find that some of them are met. So when staff reviewed their application, the applicant's request for keeping these, we realized that we could not approve at the staff level because there's four of these findings that we could not make at the staff level. And I'll just run you through those very quickly. They are in your staff report in greater detail. One of those is need. We didn't see any justifiable need because the scope would be expanding those encroachments into the right-of-way. We do believe that there are ways to control erosion through plantings and also controlling the water through a rolled asphalt berm, which does exist in several places around town. Also, as to the staircase, there is already a way to physically access the property via the driveway, which we typically would approve administratively at the, you know, the city, city administrator level. The other finding was drainage. We do, we do, at the staff level, did believe that the encroachment was inconsistent with city design guidelines with respect to drainage. Preferred method for drainage is native plants and jute netting. Public Works does have a standard condition of approval is that projects with natural slope in the right-of-way use more natural ways, planting native things like that to control erosion. And as I mentioned, the rolled asphalt berm. Another finding was the public use and enjoyment. The encroachment would, in, in staff's opinion, diminish the public use and enjoyment of the right-of-way. It reduces the amount of public open space, essentially captures it for, you know, terrace garden use on the, on the property of, of the property owner, essentially creating an extension of the private property into the right-of-way. And the last one we couldn't find was compatibility. There's a host of regulations. Those are written in great detail in your staff report. But some of the general citations is our general plan policy talking about informal vegetated right-of-way. Our municipal code, which talks about prohibiting planters and above-ground encroachments, and a series of, of guidelines from our residential design guidelines talk about maintaining and enhancing informal, unvegetated open space, maintaining informal landscaping edges, planting invisible areas to continue the natural forest character, and leaving the right-of-way in its natural state. So as I mentioned, the standard of review at the staff level, we have to make all these findings. And you can see the section here that talks about that. The city administrator or his or her designee may approve the application if it conforms to the standards, all of the standards. It doesn't say all, but that's the way we read that. If the encroachment doesn't conform to these standards, then it tells us to refer it to the city council, which implies that the city council doesn't have to make all those standards, but can consider the merits of the project on an individual basis. We talked about those mandatory findings. We don't, we have to make all of them at the staff level. We don't believe you don't, you do. And lastly, our staff recommendation based on that is, as we would do, it would be denying the permanent encroachment for legalizing the existing encroachments and for any of the new ones that are being proposed. And I'm available for questions if you have any. Oh, I should also mention, I'm so sorry, Council, let it interrupt. The applicant did, did mention to me right before we started that in their presentation, they, they have some thoughts about maybe reducing the scope of what they're asking for. So I don't have the full information on that, but they, they do want to share that with you when they come up and speak.
So would you like us to ask you questions now?
You can ask me questions now, and then typically, since the applicant presents first in the public comment, they would speak after your question, so I'm happy to.
Do you want to do it in this order? We ask you first?
Sure. Why don't you ask me questions and then, yeah, that'd be wonderful.
All right. Anyone have a question for Brandon?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, it's interesting, you know, throughout the village, as people are accessing their property, typically like a, you know, a path to their front door, there's usually something, some path in the right-of-way. And my reading of the design guidelines and the associated documents was that basically all that was permitted from a design perspective under those documents was wood chips, dirt, or DG. And so I guess my first question is like, is that a fair characterization? It's, it's a fair reading. I mean, it goes into a little bit more about natural materials. So that's where you'll see some of these like flagstones, you know, natural material type of things too. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And, and so that's, that's, I guess, my, my next question because I'm, I'm keyed in on the steps. So for the benefit of the public, there are some existing railroad tie steps on the north side of the property that go through the public right-of-way. And so that, I guess, in, in your reading, railroad tie wooden steps incompatible or compatible with the guidelines? It's a great question. I mean, wood is a natural material. Right. Certainly more compatible than concrete steps, I would say. That's, that's a slippery, slippery answer. I know. You know, wood, wood is natural. The tar that is put into railroad ties is not natural. So, you know, this, this is the, the challenge with.
It could be redwood, so that's a.
It could be, certainly. You know, I think that that's the test when we get to this level, is there's some discretion allowed with all of you that you feel if it fits in with that sort of ethos of natural materials, subordinate to the forest, things like that, that all those, those guiding principles of our, of our design guidelines. And then I guess my, my sort of next question along that same line is, if it was just a DG path, it would be approved, right? It, it could be. That's true. Sometimes to overcome a slope, DG is not appropriate. That's my point. Yeah, exactly. Right. And so, yeah, I think that's, that's kind of from a factual, you know, those are my questions.
Anybody else have a question before I go? Alessandra?
I'm afraid it's going to end up being more of a comment, so I'm just debating whether I should ask it now or later. I, I just have concerns with the whole safety aspect of it because it seems like this, for lack of a better word, like just mound of dirt just seems to go into the street. It's very hard when you're at the stop sign to look to your, when you're on Torres, looking, you know, to your right to see traffic that's coming. And then the same situation when you're coming down on Fifth. So would the city ever do anything to, I hate to say it, just kind of clean that up and, and remove some of that just so you can get better access at the intersection?
We wouldn't take that as a first step. You know, our, our documents, our, you know, right-of-way management documents, it talks about using natural methods to control erosion first. So we would not start from trying to, we certainly wouldn't be installing large, tall bushes to make it worse. But we would look towards, you know, ground cover, grasses, native things like that, jute netting that helps control the soil erosion. But as far as like taking a first, first step at cutting into the bank itself, we probably would not take that approach.
Okay. But do you think that that is something down the road that could be done? Because it really does seem like it, well, at first takes up, there's no way to park on, on, in those areas. And then it does really seem like you'd have to go quite a bit forward in that intersection just to see if, you know, another car is coming.
Yeah, it's, you know, our, our, our guidance from our guidelines is to keep it as, in its natural state as much as possible. That is somewhat the natural landform there when the streets were put in. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Jeff? Do you have a question?
So if, if you were to go purely by the guidelines, would you recommend removing all the existing steps? For, for those of you who weren't on the tour, this house used to be situated, so it, it was actually entered on Fifth. But over the years, remodels have taken place and they moved the entrance to Torres. So there are, there are some steps on Fifth that would allow you to enter the house when the house was originally built. So those are not legal at this point either, although they're.
They're, they're essentially legal non-conforming, so they're, they're in place. They've been there for who knows how long. And you can maintain a legal non-conformity.
Yes.
To make, make it safe. Yeah. So we, that would be something at a staff level we would, we would let them maintain.
Yeah. So one of the interesting things in situations like this is, is there are city buildings which we've closed because of ADA access. But in this case, we're saying that walking up a fairly sloped driveway is, is safe, which it might not be if it's raining. I mean, it's stone, right? You could, it could be slippery.
Yeah, that's true.
So it seems that even if it's not in our guidelines, it would seem logical based on the fact that we're trying to redo all of our buildings to make them ADA and wheelchair accessible, that you would think that every house would, would be required to have some safe entrance. And I also understand the owners have some, I don't know if it's handicap, but some mobility question.
So we have, so the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA does not apply to private property.
Right.
However, the city does have reasonable accommodations written into our code, which many cities do, where someone who has a documented disability can apply for things that are contrary to what the code allows. Think about like setbacks and things like that, where you can apply with written, you know, some sort of proof that you have a need for a reasonable accommodation. So that, that would be the path for a private homeowner to do something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I, when I first looked at this, I, I looked at where they were putting the stairs and I can't say that I was excited about that. I mean, it just seemed like it was in an odd place, right on the driveway. It, it doesn't really fit in with the natural environment. And that, like this, the stairs that are existing, they sort of blend in. And you see there are probably hundreds of situations around town. And I, I had some pictures that I, I took this morning. hundreds of situations around town, and I had some pictures that I took this morning. I think the actual erosion control, I'm certain that if you graded that nicely, removed the stump, graded it nicely, there are lots of instances where cienothis and other plants like that have grown in, and it's beautiful, it's natural. I don't really see, I don't like the approach they were gonna take with the wood retaining walls.
Well, Mayor, if I could be so bold, I'm sorry, to offer, maybe we hear from the applicant at this point to see what they're...
I'm sorry, I'm getting too far into it.
That's okay.
I love this, okay, go ahead.
Okay. As long as there's no more questions from the council, then I can, okay.
You're absolutely right. Would the applicant like to make a comment?
Erin Rose from Lewis Builders, representing the applicant.
If you could pull the microphone down.
Sure thing.
One of the mics that we're going to be replacing. Thank you, Jeff.
Got it. We would like to keep the bottom retaining wall that is closest to the street. Most, oh, sorry. There we go.
There's a reason why we're making improvements.
Mostly for, we are gonna be removing that trunk. There's a stump there, and it's going to destabilize about 12 linear feet horizontally, probably about three feet vertically. That's the biggest concern as far as erosion. If we need to reduce the wall to that area, we can. We definitely would like to take out the middle wall. After going through the two tours, December and this month, hearing the feedback and the questions, we can take that one out and use the netting and the jute, and of course, we will have the ground cover and native plants on there to stabilize the hillside as we originally planned and proposed. We would like to retain the staircase that we had proposed on Torres, just for safety for the homeowners. We could soften it if it, you know, the straight line doesn't look natural enough, make it blend in a little bit more, or possibly relocate it. We're more than happy to work with the council on recommendations that you have or requirements to move the project forward. Additionally, the very top retaining wall, I believe that one is also legal nonconforming if we don't touch it. It's the one that's all the way, yes, all the way up at top by that really large pine tree. We looked at that originally during the planning phase and building phase, and there isn't really a way to touch it without possibly destabilizing the large pine that's there, and then also subsequent oak trees that are protected and have grown up in the years since that original wall was put up. So if we could retain that, just as is, is legal nonconforming, we would like to do that. Do you have any questions for me?
So Brandon was saying that you had some thoughts of revising your proposals?
Yes, to de-scope that middle wall, the new one that's halfway up the slope, because after reading Marnie's planning report, and then talking to everyone on the tour, and also having the ability to watch the performance of that hillside during the December rain, I realized that that could easily be netted and planted.
All right.
Is there anything else you'd like to ask me?
I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. It's a much calmer session than last time when I saw you in December, so I'm sure we're all grateful for that.
Do you have any specific reasons why you need the stairs, as Brandon was discussing?
A client recently had hip replacement surgery and is still recovering from that, and none of us are getting younger. We all have to kind of think about things with aging in place, and they would like to stay in this home for the remainder of their time here, so I'd like to give them an access that's a little bit safer. The stairs that are currently existing, the older ones on the northeast corner currently aren't code because they don't have a handrail. At the time that those were put in, that wasn't a requirement. But now if those same stairs are redone, we have to put in a handrail, and that is a safety feature that's on the new set of stairs.
Yeah, it would seem to make sense if you're gonna have stairs to have a handrail if it's for...
I agree.
Semi-handicap access.
Code's making us safer every year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anybody else from the applicant's team that would like to come and make a comment?
Is your mic on, Dale?
It is. I'm just too far away. The cord on this mic is, doesn't allow it to come closer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, staff. Scott Julian, also with Lewis Builders. Just wanted to comment, when we started this process before we submitted, I led a tour with Rob Culber from Public Works and went over the plan, mainly to just get his perspective on the evolution of the slope falling down, particularly on Torres, but also on Fifth. And he acknowledged that it's just continual shoveling and sweeping and cleaning and the safety issues that Councilman Gorbachev had brought up. And I don't, I don't see any functional way to not have the lower retaining wall after our site tour last month and this month, or yesterday. Chiseling away and grading that slope, there's so many tree roots in there. We noted one on Fifth, and I just, I don't see that really working well. In a lot of other cases, I will say, at 19 years of age, I was licensed as a landscape contractor, so I've done a lot of this work physically, personally. I just don't see this being a really good application for trying to taper that slope down without the lower wall. I will also say, if there's room for reasonable accommodations, we're happy to make that application for the primary stairs on Torres. For the record, Officer Bruno and I had an unfortunate situation where we actually, there was a slip and fall accident, and there was actually a fatality on that driveway. And I do think the stairs are appropriate, so thank you.
Anybody else have a comment or a question at this point?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we're gonna close public comment for now. Oh, somebody popped up. All right, come on up. I'll reopen public comment for you.
Good evening, Cheryl Givens. Nice to see you all, and thank you all for taking the time here. I want to zoom out and talk about the project on a slightly different vector, which is something that we see consistently with this corner in this property. One is, it's a safety aspect, and it's a beautification aspect. The home sits a couple doors down from the Hansel and Gretel home, and we have a Comstock home right on the river's side. Many people use this corner, walking between those two homes, as they are noted on the map. That is the walking path on the map. With the aspect that you spoke about, we get a lot of that vegetation encroaches out into the roadway, and we have a number of pedestrians that end up walking in the middle of the street, and then they're competing with automobiles in order to make safe passage around the corner. We also have a hotel parking lot that sits on the other side of Torres, which you all saw. So it's actually a fairly well-traveled stretch of road. It's also one of the few areas where there's unlimited time parking, so we have a lot of people that park there, use it as an in-and-out, et cetera. And so ensuring that there's good, safe access for both pedestrian cars is important. When that rain starts and that hillside starts to slide down into the street, the cars no longer use it as a two-way street, but rather a one-way street. We then have pedestrians, and everyone's competing to get by safely. So it's really important that we do find a way to help that. We have been the ones out there shoveling the dirt and making sure that the road stays clear. That's the work we've been doing. I also note that the photos that you see there show the hillside in pretty good shape because we've continued to maintain weed abatement, ivy abatement, which by the way, in 2020 created a rodent issue for the residents of Torres Avenue when town closed, and the rodents took up residence on that hillside, which we abated. So we just think it's important to find a path forward to really beautify the corner, make it safe for everyone as well. It's not about wanting to adopt more land on our private property, but rather, I think, just continue to beautify the city, because it does get seen a lot by people as well. And I think that's the last point I'd make. I think this is a great opportunity for public-private partnership, which I think we can all agree as towns around this state and in America are taxed with having to make their coffers spread more and more for other, you know, we talked about wildfire abatement. I think, you know, that's something that's foremost in my mind as well. Those dollars should be well-spent in our cities, and this is an opportunity where we as a private citizen are actually going to foot the bill to make this property safer and more beautiful, and I think it's a good example for our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
I see, I'll make a comment. Yeah, one more. Go ahead. You have to come up.
My name is Ian George.
I think the idea of having people line up would be good, based on what I've seen tonight. We talked about that earlier, so we know who's gonna speak. Thank you, go ahead.
I'm also on the applicant's side. I work for Lewis Builders. I just wanted to make sure that you had seen the letters of support from the neighbors, and there's one that came from the hotel owners just across the street today.
We have.
This wasn't wrong, okay.
Everybody's seen those letters? I saw them. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask, who is the person in the applicant's side that's actually a designer? Who designed this? If you could come up.
Mr. Brandon.
Yes. Did you look at any other options for the stairs besides where you have them here?
I did not. What I used was the existing footprint of the driveway that we're moving, that we weren't disturbing any soil. We will already be ripping that area of asphalt out, and I wanted to not touch any ground that hadn't been disturbed already.
Yeah, because what I don't like about that is it doesn't fit in with any of the concepts that we're trying to do to make it more natural and fit in with the natural environment. It's just sort of there without any softening at all.
Okay.
And even if they, and I think Hans was hitting on that, like some kind of a path that meandered a little bit, and there are tons of examples of that around town. But I can't see approving the stairs the way they are right now.
Okay.
I personally think it makes sense to have some access to your property that's safe, because walking up that driveway is not safe certain times. I've had some slow plots, and it's not good. I also, the stones that you have, the boulders that you have, I mean, they're not like native boulders.
They were there.
They didn't, we didn't have volcanoes here, and all of a sudden, they just showed up. That whole thing is just sort of messy to me. I mean, I don't, it's hard for me to imagine that you couldn't slope that if you took the tree roots. I don't know that the tree roots were the, those weren't for the oak tree all the way down to the street, were they?
I believe so. There are two protected oaks that are on the, they're almost right on the corner.
Did you have the forester come out and talk with you about that?
Yes, we have the full forester's report.
Did he say that he wouldn't approve you grading that slope so it's more manageable?
Not that in particular, no. I just have learned that anything within six feet of a tree is sacred ground.
Because I personally think that if you graded that nicely, because right now it's just a drop-off, and it doesn't have to be that way.
Okay.
You could make a nice slope. And I've got five pictures of places around town that look beautiful with cienothis, and it's not gonna have any erosion. You know, you just have to deal with the cienothis growing, but sometimes, if it's the right place, it'll grow fast. In another year and a half, you'll have beautiful soil retention. So I would, I would just like to see if you could, it might take you to get permission to see if you're gonna cut roots, but if you could grade that nicely, soften it, first of all, it would make it more, go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to make some comments before we start negotiating. One question, thank you for coming up. Where's the front door?
Front door is at the, let's see, you see the blue where it says stone retaining wall?
Uh-huh.
Right there. That's the front door. Originally, it was immediately to the right of that.
So the front door has always been in the same spot on the house?
For the last 20 years or so.
Okay.
As long as the clients...
I should be asking, I'm sorry, I should be asking Brandon and staff.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry?
Before, like 20 years ago?
I think 40, maybe?
40 years ago.
Of the original build?
It was over here, the original front door this year.
And then the...
So I, so I, you know, certainly as Alessandra knows and everybody knows, you know, I tend to take, thank you, you can, I don't have any more questions for you.
Oh, I can sit?
Yeah.
Great. Are you done?
Just stay close.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you just go sit?
Not that close.
So I, you know, as Alessandra knows, I tend to follow staff's reasoning on these things and go down the municipal code and evaluate the encroachments with respect to, what is it, A through G? A through G or A through H in the municipal code? And I generally agree in this case with staff. You know, you see, and I understand that the slope sloughs off into the street, and that's a problem. It does it on my house, too, and we also go out and clean it up out of the street as it does in a lot of places. But I don't see, you know, to riff on something that you guys said, I don't see the lower retaining wall as making the street safer. And in fact, I think that the lower retaining wall presents another, a different kind of trip and fall hazard to people that are walking on the street. You know, that's unusual because we don't have people walking up onto a six-inch or a 12-inch retaining wall. So I don't see how, so for example, in this diagram that's up here, the lower brown line, I don't see how that makes the street safer for pedestrians or anything. I agree that it would solve, you know, the spoken issue of, maybe it would solve the spoken issue of dirt falling into the street, but I don't see it necessarily making pedestrians any safer. And I think, you know, we have this sort of problem on Torres, too, where we have, there are lots of sections on Torres between like Eighth and 12th that are basically one-way, that are one-way streets even without any weather at all. And yet Torres is one of the nicest streets in town when you walk down, you know, those four blocks, and it's the planting, it's the planting in the right of way that makes Torres, you know, enchanting in the way that other streets maybe are not, the way my street is and my street is not, because we, I have a wider street with relatively flat, relatively flat and lots of parking spots. And I think that the guidelines, you know, I think that the guidelines, you know, that staff has referred to, I think we, you know, over the course of the past years, we've kind of, you know, the council has sort of done this to ourselves, we've sort of gotten into the habit of letting people sort of encroach into the encroachments. And I think that's a bad habit, and I think we need to, I think it behooves the city to sort of dial that back. So as the encroachment is written, as the permit is written, right now, I'm an O. I asked where the door was, and, you know, because I think you're allowed, you know, I think it's reasonable to ask for one, and I should talk to the four of you, three of you, I think it's reasonable to ask for one, one, one walkway to a door. You know, I think that two is not particularly reasonable. So I would ask you, you know, to, you know, I would be inclined to improve one or the other, and maybe this is a problem that was created, you know, to your point, maybe this was a problem that was created 20 years ago when the front door moved from Torres, which is, which, you know, from Fifth to Torres. I mean, Fifth is obviously, you know, when you walk the property, the Fifth Avenue staircase is much easier, if I remember, much easier to navigate than this new staircase on Torres would be. And I don't really know how to solve that problem, but maybe one is more in my wheelhouse right at this moment. I'd wait to hear what the three of you say. One is maybe more my wheelhouse than two.
Great comments, Jeff. I don't disagree with you about the one staircase. So what you're saying is put a staircase somewhere over in the area where they currently have it on the plans?
I'd like to hear one.
Great comments, Jeff. I don't disagree with you about the one staircase. So what you're saying is put a staircase somewhere over in the area where they currently have it on the plans?
Well, I'd like to hear one.
Is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure I understand.
I'm kind of ambivalent about it.
Like, I don't, like, I don't, you know, there, to me, there's advantages to having one by the driveway. There's advantages, you know, I think the one by the driveway is sort of a more natural one, but I think that street is much more difficult. And I wonder whether anybody's gonna use it because of the difficulty of, you know, I think if you, you know, when we were standing there, when we were standing there yesterday on the tour, people actually walked up and down 5th. And we saw, I think we saw it when we were standing there, nobody walks up and down that section of Torres, with the exception, I'm assuming with the exception of the house, of the historic houses that are, the historic house, it's a couple of doors down, because the street is difficult to walk on. And so I think, you know, I would tend to avoid it. I think most people would tend to avoid it if they didn't live there. So those are my comments. I'm ambivalent about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. I'm not a fan of the additional retaining walls. I'd rather just keep that one that's already the existing one and work on other ways to control the erosion and do a little bit more of a natural kind of thing. I don't like the look of the stairs that are proposed on Torres. I think it would need to be much more like a curve, a little bit more of a natural thing to blend in more. I know this is, you know, a significant amount that we're talking about, that, you know, is on city land, but as the homeowner said, you know, they're willing to foot the bill and do something about it, and it just feels like the city might not. So I think we should almost, you know, in a way, appreciate that, that we're trying to, you know, work together and make this better. But I'm certainly, you know, open to how everyone else is kind of going on this.
So you seconded Jeff's concept about one stairway?
Well, you know, and here, we're dealing with, you know, 20 years ago, a previous owner moved it. It would make sense that it's closer to where the front door is. I mean, it doesn't really make sense right now to have the existing old one on 5th Avenue, because you'd have to go up that and then go around the house to get to the front door. So just on a convenience matter, it would seem it would make more sense to have it with Torres and where the driveway is, but just a different, like we just said, a different sort of shape and design.
So basically, moving a legal, non-conforming stairway from one side to the other?
If that's what seems like we're going with.
Sort of what is emerging here.
Yeah.
Hans, what do you think about this?
Well, first of all, I can appreciate your situation. You know, you've got a super steep driveway, and you want to be able to access your house in a safe way, right? I mean, there's like a common sense element to this, and, you know, it's hard to, you don't want to lose sight of that. Similarly, like, I used to live on 5th, and I used to walk down 5th into town. That was the way I got into town. And there's actually, this isn't the only one. There's a number of these. And, you know, I can appreciate the safety question. It's one where you do have to kind of do one of these around the corner. You know, on the other side of the ledger, when you read the general plan and you read the design guidelines, and interestingly enough, you know, kind of reading through the historic context statement over the past couple of days, like, there is an aesthetic that we're going for in those documents, right? We're going for something that's organic, that's informal, right? And, you know, I think that's sort of important to kind of keep in mind. And so it's, I think those documents are important. I do think that there's a ton of public right-of-way around town that's just, I mean, as we all know, it's just the Wild West out there. There's all kinds of stuff that's happened over the years. And I think it's important to bring the public right-of-way back into conformity with what's in the design guidelines, what's in the general plan. And so I think when, you know, this property wasn't renovated, I'm assuming, for decades, and all of a sudden, this is the moment when, you know, you have that opportunity to bring it back into conformity. And, you know, I kind of take that seriously. You know, in terms of the specific elements, the new retaining wall, you know, it's really not in the design guidelines. There's nothing about, you know, retaining walls in the design guidelines. Again, having lived on 5th, like, I get it. It is, you know, you do have to look around that corner. There's, and again, there are multiple, there's one, I think it's 5th and Guadalupe, kind of on the southeast side, very similar type of situation, probably even steeper, actually. So it's not a completely unique situation. So on the retaining wall, you know, I tend to agree with staff and, you know, my general inclination is, you know, if they say that we can handle this with jute netting and adding ground cover, like some Carmel Creeper to add some stability to the soil, then, you know, to me, that would be what's in keeping with the documents, right? The rocks, I agree with you, Mayor, like, I don't, those rocks clearly, apparently no rocks are in keeping with the design guidelines, but certainly not, certainly not those rocks. You know, the steps are, I think it's important to have some steps so that someone can access this property, like you said, in the rain. I completely agree with you that the sentiment that you've all mentioned, which is those steps in the sort of like super linear, it's just not exactly, you know, what we're going for. I think something that kind of meanders, I think, I think I'm okay having it close to the driveway, but I wouldn't want to have it adjacent, like literally touching the driveway, which I don't think it is in the diagram, but a little bit more of a meander, something that feels more, less linear and more organic, which is, I think, the theme that we're going for in the documents. But I would say, in terms of process, you know, I feel like the role of the city council is to sort of create policy, and this, I feel like I'm in a planning commission meeting, right?
Or landscaping company.
Yeah, exactly. When I, you know, when I look at these kinds of situations, I look at it as an opportunity to sort of refine the policy. And so what's glaring in the policy is there's nothing in the policy that addresses steeply sloped public right-of-way. And so to me, as a policymaking body, I think that's the opportunity here, is to say, hey, let's provide some direction to staff to go back and address retaining walls, stairs, because this is, again, just on this one street, there's multiple examples of this. And maybe we need to provide some direction on, you know, what we think should be acceptable in those situations, but maybe they could at least present us with some options. And so I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, a process where we just have these come off as sort of one-off ad hoc decisions, and I'd much rather, you know, address them in sort of, at a policy level, and then, you know, we won't have to deal with this same issue in the future. So...
And it turns out, we are dealing with, these keep coming up.
Right.
I've been watching them. That was really, really excellent, Hans. I liked your comment a lot. I don't know what's possible. Brandon, could you step back up?
Mr. Mayor, let me offer a couple of things. Mr. Booter and I talked about amending our policy, and I thought it would be a great add-on to our design traditions project, even though it's a separate section of code. We can amend this chapter as well, because I tend to agree with Mr. Booter when it comes to sloped properties and the necessity, quite frankly, often to put some kind of a low-profile retaining wall in. If it's gonna be helpful to get you through the decision-making process, you might want to divide up the existing unpermitted encroachments from the new proposed encroachments, and do your decision-making in that kind of a matrix. And again, you can also continue the item and ask the applicant to come back with a redesign with elements as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'd just like to do as much as we can here tonight, because they're building a house, and they want to get moved on with this. I'll just repeat my comments. I think the, I don't like the retaining wall. I don't like the look of the existing one. I don't like the look of having it on the street. I understand why you want to do it, but I still think that you could grade that. You should have the forester come out and consult with you about tree roots. But I think it would be beautiful if you could just grade that down and put some sea anothis. I could show you some examples of, you can go to Forest Theater, I'll show you some examples of beautiful sea anothis. It's fantastic. And the stairs, I agree with councilperson Booter of, it needs to have some interest to it that blends in with the environment, and this doesn't. I would personally like to see it further over, but if it makes more sense to put it there, if you could just have it follow the slope, the slope of the graded area. I don't know if we can tell them, tell staff to take another look at that, that, like, it sounds like we would approve a stairway.
Yes.
But we want it to be more natural, blend in, and make sense with the overall landscaping that they're gonna have to do with the graded area. I don't mind leaving existing...
So my question, I have a D. You know, I assume, Mayor, that you're talking about the staircase near the driveway.
Yes.
So, you know, my original thought was one staircase, not two. So I would like to understand whether that's a place that the council would like to go. You know, it sounds like we are mostly in agreement about, you know, deleting the wall, the two new retaining walls. I, you know, to comment on your comments, I, I'm okay with the, you know, wood retaining wall. It's, you know, it's right outside the property line. Maybe they thought it was on the property line. It's not the greatest, it's not the worst. I like the informality of it. It's not stone.
The existing one.
Yeah, the existing one. It's not stone. You know, it could be better, it could be worse. You know, in a couple of years, when it falls over, they'll just replace it with another one, and, you know, that would be fine. And it's pretty far up the, pretty far up the shaded hill, the hidden hill, to really be seen from the street. I don't really like the rock walls. And I think maybe, you know, one idea would be that we could... The other thing, you know, to sort of talk about Hans's comments, it does, and I saw Alessandra nodding her head, you know, it feels a little bit like we're in the landscape design business or the planning commission business, and I wonder, and I would ask staff if there's a way that we could sort of, maybe this is, like, I don't feel comfortable really approving a set of stairs. I think that's a planning commission's business. Is there a way we can just have the planning commission deal with the aesthetics? Like, these, like, you, you know, staff says that, you know, you bring, you bring these encroachment permits to us when they don't meet the requirements, right? So can we, if we told you that, if we told you that, yeah, they can have one set of stairs, and it can't be near, you know, they don't get anything except the whatever, they can have one set of stairs, but it needs to be not so near the driveway, and you should take it back to the planning commission or to approve the look and feel of stairs. Like, are you comfortable doing that?
We're comfortable doing that.
And we don't even need to necessarily go to the planning commission for that, as long as the materials that are proposed are materials that comport with the design guidelines.
And you're clear enough in your direction.
Yeah. Because I, you know, I'm more comfortable, like, I'm more comfortable with you approving a set of stairs than the five of us. Like, we don't really know, like, we do a whole bunch of things.
Again, what we've heard is that you're more natural materials, more meandering, less formal, ensuring that there's a landscape space between the new driveway. And, so I mean, that's really good direction, and I'm already thinking, you know, of ways of, that Aaron can make modifications to this to make it look a little bit more, have a little bit more village character, a little less formal.
And a good way to think of it, sir, is that you're really giving us direction on the use of the land. I mean, your role as a council, as a city council, is the use of this land. And so that's what we're looking for you tonight, is how to use this land. And then we, as your...
I don't want to speak for everybody else, so...
I agree with that. And in addition, the concept of trading off one non-conforming stairway for another one makes some sense to me, which means the other one could go, which they probably wouldn't mind having to go anyway. I mean, the one on the backside of the property.
The which one, sir?
The one over there.
Oh, the staircase, the other staircase.
I mean, that's, if you need to do that, to make it conform with...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, again, it's interesting. I mean, I don't want to get too into the weeds on it, but, you know, I do live on a corner lot, and I'm lucky enough that it's not super sloped. But I regularly use both, we've got, I guess, two, you know, two gates on the fence, and regularly, we use both of them. But yeah, you know, this is a kind of a different situation where there's stairs, and maybe it's got more of a visual impact. You know, and I think, like, those are the, those are, I think, the policy-type, you know, questions that, like, you could imagine a policy where it's like, you get one set of stairs on a property, even if it's a corner lot, or if it's a corner lot, you get two sets of stairs on a property. Like, that should be a policy somewhere. It shouldn't be something that we're just kind of...
We're gonna come for your stairs.
Don't do that. So, so in any case...
We have to refuse your pass.
Yeah.
So I've got a question just about the process and the procedure of how to do this. Mr. Mayor, would it make more sense to go through all of the things, first the existing unpermitted ones, and have us decide on each individual one, so then we can give better direction to staff?
I'd enjoy that.
Me too.
That would make your good ideas here.
That would make me happy. Thank you.
We want to make you happy. So let's do it.
Start with the easy ones.
The drive, so the drive, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the driveway encroachments, we issue those all day.
Chip, I'm sorry. If it makes it easy, they're actually all listed.
Yeah, so I'm reading off the, yeah, the slide here. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Then you have the stone retaining wall that's existing. It's hard to call it really a retaining wall. It looks like rocks on the ground, but what's your feeling on that one, council?
My feeling is if, they may need some kind of, when they put the stairs wrapping around, they may need some kind of stones, but I would just use, I would use granite boulders of some sort.
I would, I would leave that. Sorry.
I mean, again, we're becoming a landscape company, and we probably should.
Yeah, I would.
I would follow, I would follow the design guidelines.
If they're gonna leave boulders, I would, it would be nice to have proper boulders.
What did he say, sir?
Like, he said, Hans said, follow design guidelines. I'm happy having you, having staff, you know, if the boulders are, if you're talking about the thing that says stone retaining wall in blue, and then stone curb in red, sort of, those two things. I mean, I'm happy, you know, giving you, giving staff discretion to decide how to stabilize the area around, you know, around the, you know, the driveway and the stairs. Now, I would prefer, like, and now I only speak for myself, I mean, I would prefer that there not be anything, that the stairs be sort of at grade, you know, the stairs be sort of at grade if they can, because, you know, the, obviously, the driveway is gonna be at grade, or close to, close to a grade. I'd prefer that, in which case, that we wouldn't really need any rocks at all.
So we'll try to use the staircase itself to stabilize the hillside. Mr. Amoff, how do you feel about the rock?
Well, I think, because they're so close, I think this could be something that the designer goes back and sees, depending on how you make that more natural kind of curving pathway, maybe it goes into that area where the stone retaining wall is, and something else happens. But once again, we shouldn't be deciding your design. So I'm totally happy with, you know, having us make these decisions and then sending it back to you to be able to be creative and do what works with that property.
There really isn't a stone retaining wall, so I don't even think so.
Yeah, I don't think so either, Mayor. Landscaping, we encourage landscaping in the right-of-way, so why don't we just say that one's a good one? And then the wood staircase, and of course, that's on 5th Avenue. Council, how do you feel about what Mr. Booter brought up, you know, having a staircase on both elevations? That's an existing staircase.
Wait, sorry, where did we land on the rocks?
At our discretion.
Okay.
On the wood staircase that's on 5th, I almost feel, since it isn't being used, that it's almost gonna naturally decay, so just sort of like, let it. I mean, is it used? Because it seemed like it was sort of, you know, not really, it just seemed like it was almost like fading into the soil surrounding it.
Definitely blends in.
Right. Yeah.
So, no replacement? I mean, I would say, if we're gonna make... So, no replacement, I mean, I would say, if we're going to make them, you know, if we're going to put a condition on this, that they not replace the wood staircase, and we let, they let it just sort of disintegrate into the ground, we should just make them take it away. Like, I don't, let's not, because if we leave it there, you know, if we decide, you know, right here, against, you know, admittedly, we haven't, we don't have a policy, but if we decide we're only going to have one staircase, let's just get rid of the other one. Like, that, that would be my preference.
Any opposition to Mr. Barron's thought?
I don't have any opposition.
Mr. Booter?
Yeah, I, I think, I think one staircase.
Mr. Dramoff?
I mean, it's, it doesn't seem like it's going to be used, so.
So we'll, we'll ask it to be removed. And then, and then the terrace landscape wood walls, I've heard consensus that those are not encouraged, is that a correct statement? So we're going to come up with another treatment, such as the jute netting, sea anothas, other landscape treatments that'll hold back the embankment.
And, and after consulting with our forester in terms of roots, grading it as, as much as we can, so we eliminate that drop-off.
Right.
I mean, that's a problem.
Yeah, pulling it back, they will still be able to remove the stump, obviously, we'll encourage them to do that.
We need to get it just a gradual slope, and the sea anothas or something will grow in there beautifully.
So regrading the slope is acceptable, provided we work with the, the city forester to ensure that roots aren't damaged.
Yes.
So again, we're removing the two landscape wood walls, which are in the brown lines, we talked about the stone landscape curb, the landscaping, of course, is encouraged, and then, again, the, where you're going with the staircase is to make it more natural, more increased village character, Scott, and Aaron, and Givens, and the other guy, and, you know, have it, have it either meander, ensuring that there's a landscape space between the new driveway and the staircase, Aaron, and then again, having it be a little bit less formal. And also act as a partial retaining wall for both sides of the driveway.
Could I just clarify something, Chip? The stone landscape curb is the one in red that's the furthest on the right on our thing, did we really discuss that? I thought we just spent more time on the stone retaining wall.
I lumped them together, ma'am, as, as, into our discretion to hold back the embankment or to curb the driveway if it drops off on that side, on the, on the south side of the new driveway, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
And to use more natural materials for this area.
Yes, yes, sir.
If we could.
Yes, sir. So if that's a motion, I'll make it, no, if you can make that motion, and I, do we get, do we get everything? We got everything, Brandon says we've got everything. Aaron, did you understand everything? And we'll write this up, obviously. You could ask the applicant, Mr. Mayor, if they understand, you know, the way you're going, before you formalize it, but that's up to you, sir.
What did you, I'm sorry, I want to go back to Alessandra's point, I'm looking at a picture from yesterday that I took. What did you decide about the red stone curb wall?
The, the new one or the existing one?
Because I'm looking at a picture, and it doesn't, you know...
Do you have an image of that, Brandon, in your slides?
Like, I'm looking at a picture I took, but Brandon's in the way.
There's a surprise.
Well, it's easier, easier for that to happen.
Both, both the stacks.
I'm talking about this wall that's really, Hans is in the way.
Oh, so that's this, I think...
Do you have a picture of it?
...talking about this proposed?
Yes.
Yeah, do you have a picture of it?
Is it...
Well, it's proposed, it's not there.
Is it?
I was looking for a picture of the, I was looking for a picture of the...
Existing condition.
The existing condition.
Yeah, there...
Yes.
Oh. Yeah, no, that's, that's it.
It's way over by that little shed.
That driveway, that doesn't need, like, I'm looking at it, it doesn't...
Perhaps we should ask the applicant what the purpose of that little stone, that little...
Well, I'm talking about the stone wall that's there now, right? That's it, right?
No, the one, there's one on the north, sir, the north side of the driveway, that's basically rubble.
I was talking about the one in red.
That one's, that one's proposed.
Proposed, and that's why I'm looking at the, looking at the south side of the driveway.
You're looking at the slope, about whether...
We just want us to leave you with discretion on that, too?
Yeah, that, yeah, my intention was to leave us with discretion, and work with Scott and Aaron and the Givens, and the other guy, on both sides, the rock walls on either side, the north and the south side of the proposed driveway.
So if I understand this correctly, with this motion, however we're going to word it, this goes back to you, it doesn't have to go to the planning commission, the applicant doesn't have to go through all of the process, you're just going to deal with it.
Yes, sir, unless we are too far apart, then we'll come back to you.
All right. How do we word this motion, Brandon or Brian?
My advice is, somebody makes the motion based on the comments that were just made by the city administrator, which, Novo, you would be able to incorporate that into your minutes?
I would, but I would need some help trying to summarize it, because I...
Yeah, I think that's what the city administrator's for, so.
Brian, can I ask you a question before we get into that? You know, given how it's agendized as a public hearing on the specific topic, how can we direct staff to incorporate this into the design guidelines revamp, so that it doesn't become a topic again?
Yeah, I think that that would be direction that would have to be given at another meeting.
But I heard you, sir, I mean, I'm not deaf to it, and again, I'll work with Mr. Swanson. Again, our new planning director starts in a couple of weeks, hopefully, we're going to reinvigorate some of the, the projects that have been going on.
I would say Hans and I are good friends, of course, but I, you know, that project is overdue.
Yes.
And, and I'm reluctant to increase the scope, you know, I'm reluctant at this point to give my blessing to increasing the scope of that project in any way, for fear that it will set the project back, like, it will open, you know, it will open the can of worms, I feel like we're already tamping down Benford's box there.
I hear you, sir, and I respectfully disagree, I mean, again, I can put a, you know, I can say that we can, we can write a guideline that if the right-of-way is greater than a 10% slope, that we will, we will soften our stance on things like retaining walls, or we'll be more considerate. That's a guideline, of course, so it's not, wouldn't be codified, but nevertheless, sir, we can, as we get into the adoption hearings for the design guidelines, hopefully this summer, we can talk about it then.
I mean, any level of that being included could prevent you from having to push this up to us every time.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, yes, 100%.
Yeah.
I mean, on a slope like this...
Exactly, exactly, and staff, totally.
Okay, I like that.
So we need a motion in a second on the city administrator's comments, Mr. Mayor.
Who, who made the motion?
We didn't have one yet.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm scared, too. Yeah, I'll try. So just read the first portion, then add on with, subject to the comments made by the city administrator, would that be enough to make it legal?
Well, yes, there's a few ways to make it legal. One would be to just make the motion consistent with the comments that the city administrator made about which of these encroachments would remain and which ones would not, and what modifications would be made to the stairway, all of, all of what the city administrator just said, you could make that your motion.
You don't have to repeat that.
If you, if you, that's right, you could just say what he said, but if you, you know, rather than repeat everything that he said, you just say what he, you know, whatever it was the city administrator said, that's what your motion is.
Okay, let's still read the entire first, the entire portion.
See, I'm getting hung up, like, are we approving the application or denying the application?
You're approving, you're approving the application with direction for modifications, it's kind of like conditions of approval, so you're approving it.
Yeah, so the resolution is a, like, Brandon and I had a brief conversation about this, I'm not sure that this, you know, if we're changing direction, like, this reminds me of what happened on, what happened a couple of months ago on, on Perry, Newbury and Fifth, I mean, if we're, if we're changing direction, I'm not sure that this is the right, I'm not sure this is the right resolution.
That's correct, it's not, it's not the right resolution that's in front of you, however, we've got really clear direction, we're capable of writing the resolution, all your resolutions get signed by the mayor and the clerk and the attorney. The one thing I would add, just being a bit of a nerd here, is that if you're going to approve a project, any project that's discretionary tonight, I would ask you to also find that it's categorically exempt from CEQA under 15303, which is new small projects, that would be the appropriate categorical exemption. Our resolution showed it being not a project, so when you, when you don't approve a project or you deny a project, it's exempt, I would suggest you just add a CEQA finding of 15303, which would be the appropriate exemption.
So, you want me to?
Give it a try, Jeff.
Maybe before you, maybe before you start, could I just say something? There's different ways that the council can take action, one is by a motion, but it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, is that there may be a revised resolution that is prepared, consistent with the comments that the city administrator made, and so then the question would be whether or not the council is approving that resolution as modified by the motion, or whether that resolution is going to come back to you at a future meeting for you to vote on that resolution.
My, my take would be, nobody's really going to like this, but my take would be that we just deny the application because you, you know, this whole thing is, I mean, it's not your fault.
It's my fault.
But this whole, the whole thing is sort of your discretion to bring it up to us, and we have answered your question, and I'm not sure that we need to...
But I can't make the same findings, that, I can't make the findings the council can, you have more discretion, and you've gone beyond that and saying, we, with these conditions, the application meets the findings in the municipal code.
Okay.
And I can't, I can't do that.
So, we would say, for example, adopt resolution, it's not even, this, this isn't even the right resolution number, adopt, adopt, really, adopt resolution 202508?
Well, you can still use the same resolution number, we'll replace this resolution number, amend it as you've given us direction tonight, so the resolution will just change to be what we've heard from you tonight, that will be the resolution that goes in front of the mayor and the city clerk and the attorney for signature.
Yes, it would be a motion to amend the resolution consistent with the comments that were made by the city administrator.
Okay, okay, so I would make a motion to amend resolution 202508, granting, granting permanent encroachment application EN 23077, to be, to be consistent with the comments from the city administrator and the council this evening, and finding that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA via section 15303.
I'll second it.
That's factory.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That's a wrap.
That was a learning experience.
All right, I hereby...
Nope.
We've got one more?
Future agenda items.
Any future agenda items?
Oh, any future agenda items? Do any members of the council have a request for a future agenda item?
Yeah, I was talking about this with, with a couple folks, I think it would be helpful if we moved the strategic planning up, so that the strategic planning could inform the CIP discussion, and so I think, kind of the end of February, I know the beginning of February is a little bit full, but if there was any way we could do it at the end of February, I know, I think the CIP meeting is, what, March 24th?
Yes, sir, if I may, so, again, Mr. Barron's gone from the 6th through the 22nd, I didn't bring that calendar out yesterday, but...
I have a calendar, but...
We were thinking the week of, I think it's the 27th, so it's the last full week, I don't know, it's Thursday the 27th.
Thursday to 27th, yeah.
It's the last full week of February, now, I know, I know, we've got two, we have...
You're talking about, you're talking about strategic planning, or?
Yes, strategic planning to help inform the CIP, which is on March 24th, a reminder, that's my birthday.
I, I totally agree with this concept, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and I know that, that'll be four meetings in February, that's a lot of meetings, but we're in this weird kind of crunch time with the budget, so if you can, I agree with Mr. Booter, if you can consider, you know, and it'll be usual, you know, our two-thirds of a day meeting on Thursday, the 27th, council, to talk about priorities, and then again, we come back a little bit less than a month later and talk about the CIP, and they're, and they're linked this year, they're, they drive each other, and hopefully, we've got fewer of each.
I think that councilperson Dels would like this, too.
Good.
All right. Any other, any other agenda items? All right?
I like it.
Almost.
In talking about possibly changing the code, to be more specific to this kind of situation, I would be happy to volunteer, from the other end of that, of walking through this process, it was my first time doing a right-of-way, and I managed to hit probably every gray area or roadblock that I could find, and I, I'd be happy to work with anyone if I'm allowed to, to tell you what it looks like from the other side.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With there being no more business on the agenda, we adjourn this meeting, thank you, everybody.
There's a house on the way.